Okay, Jason, you're all set.
All right.
Well, we do like to recommend, uh, like, uh, planning commission. It's June 30th, chapter 530. Um, we are via Zoom. Um, and so, just reminder that people can watch this on washingtoncity.org slash meetings. For those that aren't watching that won't hear that. And, uh, I didn't get an invocation, so I'll offer the invocation. Are we able to do the pledge?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, volunteer to, Commissioner Holly, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would, yes, thank you.
All right, I'll give the invocation here and, uh, our dear only father, we're grateful to be here today to, uh, discuss Washington City and the, the future of Washington City and the well-being of it. We ask that we might be able to have thy, thy, uh, understanding and, and as we make these decisions, um, as we make these recommendations. We are grateful for our health and, and ask that our community remain strong and continue to, to do better in this time. We also ask a blessing, um, that the community can, can continue to, to get along in the, in the light of the, the events that have happened recently. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. All right, fellas, pledge allegiance. Allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
And, for which is,
one nation, under God, indivisible, thanks, that was.
Thank you. Um, first item is, uh, agenda item, the approval of the agenda. If everyone has had an opportunity to look at June 3rd's agenda, um, and if there's no changes, I'd look for a motion to approve it.
This is Commissioner Hanson, so moved.
Commissioner Holly, second.
Have a motion and a second. Um, in favor, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
He's muted.
Okay.
There he is.
Got it. Uh, Commissioner Fitzofu?
Hi.
That's it, right? Yeah. And I forgot to excuse Commissioner Rick Henry. So I apologize for that, but we were excusing him from the meeting. So Commissioner Musso is a full acting voting member tonight. So lucky him. Uh, we'll now move to item, uh, 2A. This is the approval of the minutes for May 20th. Hope everyone's had a chance to review those and if still there are no changes, I would look for a motion to approve those.
I read drum, but I wasn't at the meeting.
If, if nobody has any comments or questions, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the meeting that took place May 20th, 2020.
I second it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hanson, a second from Commissioner Musso. In favor, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly? Uh, that was an aye. Uh, Commissioner Fitzofu?
Aye.
Right. Motion passes unanimously. Um, item three is declaration of abstention of conflicts. Any declarations of abstentions or conflicts tonight?
Um, for item 5A and 8C, I might know some members of the general public who might be watching this or plan on making some comments.
This is Commissioner Holly. I will, um, not be voting on issue 9A, the Kimball Gardner issue.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Hanson. I'm going to need to abstain, uh, due to a financial conflict with item 4A. It's a lot in phase three.
This is Commissioner Musso. I'll need to abstain on item 9A with the Kimball Gardner. Proposal.
Um, and I, the, item 9A, I, um, live nearby and the firm I work for did a site tour for it, so. Any other abstentions or conflicts? If not, um, we'll move to item 4A. Uh, this is a subdivision name change. Uh, this is recommendation to city council for request to change the subdivision name from the Homesteads Phase 1 through 5 at Stewki Farms and Homestead Heights Phase 1 through 3 at Stewki Farms located approximately Homestead Way and Prairie Way. The applicant is Carl Larson. Turn time staff on this.
All right, thanks. I will come up here and, oh, right. Hey, can everybody see that exhibit on your screens over there?
Yeah.
As stated, the applicant's requesting approval of the name change to an approved preliminary plat. The current approved preliminary plat for the Homesteads at Stewki Farms is being requested to be changed to the Homesteads Phases 1 through 5 and Homestead Heights Phases 1 through 3. Um, hopefully you can see those if you've zoomed in on your exhibits. Where those differences are so you can see the Homestead, uh, Heights Phase 1, 2, and 3. And sorry, let me get my great little pencil here. And, uh, that would be, and I'm going to change color because that green's not showing up real well. But red always does. And so this is the new area. But the change and then the other, uh, what's remaining over here on the east end would be the current, the Homesteads Phases 1 through 5. So basically on this west side of, of the old preliminary plat, changing it to the Homestead Heights Phases 1, 2, and 3 is what's, uh, the name change is about. This is, this falls within the Stewki Farms Planned Community Development. The Homesteads and Homestead Heights at Stewki Farms will still remain with 108 approved lots and it's covering 43 plus acres in that area. Staffs reviewed the proposed name change and the preliminary plat still conforms to the PCD zoning. That is part of, again, the Stewki Farms Planned Community Development. The subdivision is also still in compliance with subdivision ordinance and other city ordinances as well. Staff therefore recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the name change request from the Homesteads at Stewki Farms to the new proposed names of the Homesteads, which consists of Phases 1 through 5 and Homestead Heights Phases 1 through 3 at Stewki Farms subdivision. That would be on to the city council and it will still be, um, according to the original findings and the original, uh, conditions. Uh, we don't want to change those that were part of the original preliminary plat and those will still stay in effect as part of this change. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners might have on this name change.
So Drew, the only thing that's changed are the names, right?
The, Yes.
Change on any of the lots or, or anything like that?
Yeah, no, that, that's all stayed. And again, it's still on that preliminary side. Uh, they have finals, you know, I can, uh, gotta do my mouse, but, um, this particular part of the subdivision over here, this Phase 1 and 2 are, are built or, and have, you know, been already recorded. And so, but the rest of this, you know, these other phases that are coming, Phases 3, 4, and 5 on the regular, the original Homesteads, plus these three phases as part of the new name over on this end. Um, again, starting here at Lot 90, even though you have some different, you know, there's still some 70s, but that line between that red and blue, um, to the west will be the new name of the, the Homestead Heights. So that, that's really all that's changing.
Okay. Other questions for staff?
Um, I did, this Commissioner Holly, um, why does he want a hu- uh, name change? Do we know that? Does Homestead Heights sounds more attractive or?
Well, you know, I'm not sure. I really didn't ask. Sometimes they might be selling those lots to a particular builder. And he may want something a little different. I'm just not sure. And I don't, Steve, do we have a, the applicant online with this one? Is, um, anybody from civil science or from the Larsons online with us? Do you know?
And the reason I ask is because there have been some issues out there, uh, with amenities and so on and so forth. I just wonder if, if this is a way of, of circumventing or getting around with those promised amenities for the other sections. And so I don't, I just don't know why in the middle of the game he's seeking a name change.
Well, just to answer that quickly, the, the short answer to that would be no, they can't get out of anything else. You know, you still have to have recorded whatever. They still, you know, follow the PCD. Um, it's not gonna, you know, I, I know there are issues out there between the residents and the HOAs, but to us, we're all about plating, subdividing. We don't get in the middle of, you know, unfortunately, those kind of issues.
Right.
So we're just looking at it as a plating state, you know, kind of frame of mind. And, uh, they're just, again, proposing to change the name.
Thank you, Drew.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I would entertain a motion on this.
Is this a public hearing?
Not on this particular thing, no.
And is it going to the city council then?
Yes, it, it will.
Yes. The applicant is not with us to comment.
No, I asked and, uh, Steve says he doesn't remember anybody. We've got other applicants, you know, representatives on there waiting for their items to come, but nobody from Stewki Farms, you know, the Larsons or, or civil science, who is their engineering group.
All right, this is Commissioner Holly then. I'll make a recommendation that we approve the name change request from the Homesteads at Stewki Farms to the new proposed name of the Homesteads Phases 1 through 5 and the Homestead Heights Phases 1 through 3 at Stewki Farms subdivision. Recommend approval onto the city council based on the original findings and subject to the original conditions.
This is Commissioner Musso, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Um, in favor, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
I abstain.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. And Commissioner Fitzofu?
Aye.
And I meant I as well. The motion passes. So item 5A is consideration recommendation to city council for the desert flower Phase 1 final plat located approximately Bella Vista and Telegraph. The applicant is Stephen Howcroft.
Okay, thank you. Um, the applicant as stated is requesting approval of, uh, the final plat for desert flower Phase 1 subdivision. The, this particular subdivision is proposing 40 lots and the area of coverage is 7.35 acres. The zoning at this particular location is a planned unit development residential. The preliminary plat was approved back on November 14th of 2018. Staffs reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Therefore, staff would recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the final plat for the desert flower Phase 1 subdivision onto the city council. That's subject to the findings and the conditions. And we do have two extra conditions that we want to have on there. And, uh, I'll just read those. It's number six and seven. The first five are the standard. But number six says, in the legend area, a box needs to be added indicating the common area. Plain white in the color appearance. This needs to be given to staff in an updated plat before moving on to city council approving for the following week. So, um, hope the applicant is hearing that. And also number seven, the general note, number eight, needs to be corrected stating that lots 8 through 16 are limited to single story. Right now it reads nine, but there is eight that's on the other side of that road that was put into that condition. So it's 8 through 16 are limited to one-story buildings, which was approved by city council during the zoning process. So I'm just adding those two notes, um, on that and hopefully applicant hears, but we'll get that out to them anyway. Um, tomorrow, because again, this is also a civil science, uh, representative or Stephen Howcroft, and I don't know if either one are on. Steve Whittaker, is either one of those people on for this item? Do you know?
It doesn't sound like it. There is a phone number that I don't know, but it doesn't sound like anybody's on for this item.
Okay. But again, it's a final plat. We'll make sure those notes are on. Other than that, staff's fine with everything, so.
So Drew, I was out there this morning and I looked at this and I just had a question because, um, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I was looking at the plat and the lot lines are the, well, obviously the, the, the lot is only the, the hashed, the hashed, uh, areas. And then there's 10 feet in between each of the, the properties. And that's common area then, correct?
Yes, it will be. And again, those are the own, the ownership footprints.
It's just the, it's just the hash.
To max out, yeah. The hash there is what they will own. And you see two models being built out there if you, you know, you went by. And they actually fit well within those private ownership and that's two of the main models they're going to be pushing. So, yeah, but you are correct. That gray area is common. In fact, I think they do have, the only box that was missing that I want them, because there's a white area out here on the street, but they haven't labeled it. That's why I wanted a box to be put on. It's just blank, plain white. Uh, because this area wasn't labeled either by word in an arrow or in a box. And so that's why I just wanted it added. Is this a landscape strip is what it is? So you see the other three boxes they have here, you know, limited common area, private ownership, and then the, um, specifies the, yeah, the gray is limited common, sorry. And then you have the private ownership and then there's the water easement that goes through this as well. So I just wanted that extra box added. Any other questions I can help you with?
So this Commissioner Holly, that detention area, that sits at the, at the very bottom of the hill, right?
Um, that's, Brandon, go ahead and jump in if you want.
That's correct. It's, it's at the west end of the, the subdivision.
Right. And then they were, they, they ran a lot of pipes from that area out to Washington Fields Road, isn't that right, Brendan?
That's correct. We did a,
Behind those, uh, all those park models and everything?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I'm with you now.
That's all.
Any other questions for staff? Not entertain a motion on this.
This is Commissioner Hanson. I'll make a motion that we recommend for approval. Final plat for desert flower Phase 1 subdivision located approximately Bella Vista Drive and Telegraph. Applicant is Stephen Howcroft. Subject to the conditions and findings listed in our reports. Additionally, we need to add two, uh, conditions. Number six is that a legend area be added, or legend box, in legend area, a box be added on the updated plat that indicates the writing that Drew had read to us earlier. I didn't catch it all, so I hope that will catch it. Um, and number seven, condition number seven, as a general note, number eight needs to be corrected to read that homes 8 through 16 are limited to one-story buildings.
This Commissioner Holly, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso? Commissioner Fitzofu?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So motion passes, um, unanimously. Item 6A, this is a public hearing. Uh, for consideration, recommendation to city council for the Mustang Valley preliminary plat located approximately 3925 South Washington Fields Road. The applicant is Smoothie Kings Holdings LLC. Staff.
Hey, thank you. Sorry that this photo is kind of turned 90 degrees, but sometimes that's how good old computer reads them, but, uh, because north is actually, you know, looking to the right where it says the Mustang Valley Town Homes is north on this. So, uh, this is right next door to Steeple Chase subdivision and next to Washington Fields Road. Applicant is requesting approval of the preliminary plat for the Mustang Valley Town Home subdivision. The applicant is proposing 76 lots on an area coverage of 8.3 acres. The zoning designation at this spot is the planned unit development residential. The surrounding zoning is agricultural. 20 acre to the north and east, which is the Andrus Properties. R16 to the west, again, which is the Steeple Chase development and R3 to the south, which is the Hoops developments um, down there of Bedford and, um, can't remember what that, uh, vacation rental place is, but that's also down to the south.
Freedom Village, I think?
Freedom, yeah. It's Freedom Village and the Bedford, yeah, which are both, that's the two R3 zonings to the south. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning, which just went through, again, the planning commission, city council within the last four to five months. Uh, the request meets all those requirements of other city ordinances at this location. Staffs reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of this preliminary plat is outlined. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Mustang Valley Town Home subdivision onto the city council based on those findings, subject to the conditions. Uh, we do have, uh, four extra ones, number 12, 13, 14, and 15 are above the standard 11. And I'll just read those real quick, uh, for you. Number 12 states that culinary water main, the culinary water main on Washington Fields Road and on the 30-foot private roads needs to be shown on the plat before moving on to city council's review. Uh, number 13, irrigation, the irrigation mains and laterals on Washington Fields Road and again on the 30, 34-foot private roads need to be shown on the plat before moving on to city council as well. Number 14, Washington County reference monument numbers on the basis of bearing line at each monument re- referenced need to be shown on the plat before moving on to the city council's review. And then lastly, number 15, note with, uh, note, I don't know why,
Will.
Maybe it's will, be added to this preliminary plat stating the condition placed on the development by the city council that Steeple Chase Road will be closed off during construction until the road is completed and dedicated to the city. That was one of the approvals the city council made on the PUD was so that people uh, weren't driving through Steeple Chase under construction purposes, but they're all going to have to come off Washington Fields Road up to the time where the road is then completed and dedicated to the city, then it will be opened up for full use of everybody in the city. So that's the four extra conditions on this preliminary plat. I'll be glad to answer any questions, uh, that you might have on this, uh, proposal.
Questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Hanson. Drew, I had a question. If I remember correctly, when we saw this project, on lot number 56, which would be the one that's the most, uh, southeast on the project down at the very bottom. We had a question about, uh, the fire turnaround. Was that addressed? Is that something that was looked at and taken care of?
Brandon, do you know on that? Did we get that clarified? I, because I know the fire department can't, well, I'm not concerned about the fire department. I'm going to answer, Brandon, you'll jump in in a minute. But to, from my perspective, uh, Commissioner Hanson, the fire department's going to fight the fire from Washington Fields Road or they're going to fight it from 3925 South. I'm not worried about that because they have full access around here. They're not going to drive up and come in here. Um, you know, to get in there. I hope that answers. And Brandon, I, I hope that sounds right to you as well. I can't see them driving into the subdivision. They're going to stop on one of those roads and fight that fire right there for lot, you know, for number 55 and 6.
And those will be, those will be six-foot exterior walls there that they're coming over the top of, is that right?
Um, in some cases they will and others it will be open.
Okay. All right, yeah, it's fine. I mean, if you're happy with it, I'm happy with it. I just want to make sure that there was a plan for that because it came up.
Well, the fire chief has looked at this project during zoning and plat, so.
Okay. The only other question that I had that might be for the applicant is if they gave any consideration to a future exterior gate that would connect on the north end of this property to expected commercial to be built in the future for residents.
And is the applicant for this on the phone line? I'm just asking out there. I know Steve said we have an unidentified number. I'm hoping it might be this applicant.
This is, Sounds like we have Dave on there, so I'll put him on, Drew.
Okay, it sounded like someone was piping up. Go ahead.
This is Dave Mabel, the applicant. Yes, we have considered and haven't figured out, uh, where to put that, but we are planning on putting an access on that north side for that commercial access.
Okay, thank you.
I had one other comment just in regards to one of the extra conditions. I know, I believe Eric and Brandon had spoke about it just in regards to the irrigation on the private roads through there. The plan was to have the irrigation on the public road, but not on the, on the, uh, private roads. And that's because there will be co- a couple of common meters because all the landscape space is part of the HOA. And so it didn't seem like it would be necessary to have it all along there uh, just for the, the couple meters for the HOA since everything landscape in there will be part of the HOA.
That's, that's correct. We did talk.
So you're okay with that, Brandon? Do you want to eliminate that condition?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that condition number 13?
13 can be removed.
Thanks.
Um, I, I did notice that they did give consideration to the homes to the north. They did space those out to, uh, to facilitate that it was more like a single home behind each lot. Um, I know it's a little bit, 11 and 12 is probably a little close to that, but I, I think they did make some spacing there to, to try to accommodate that. Um, so I appreciate that from the, from the applicant.
Yeah, that's what we talked, Commissioner Holly, that's what we talked about in the public hearing months or so ago, right?
Yes, uh-huh.
Spreading those out a little bit so as to minimize the impact on the people and behind on 460s. Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's what I remember. Thank you, Drew.
You scroll back down to that basis of bearing line on the plat.
Where is it at, Brandon?
Go uh down to the words bottom. Keep, keep going.
Which one?
Your reference monument numbers, can you just shrink it up a little bit? I, I think they might have them numbers on there, so. Yep, they've got that on there, so that was one of the conditions. They've added that, the county reference numbers. So. That was one of your conditions, the conditions you spoke about as well.
Okay.
So that, that's been handled as well.
So number fourteen is handled?
Yep.
Yeah, this is great. Two of those extra four are gone now, so that's excellent.
Good, let's keep going.
Gotta get rid of all, all of them, right?
So. I did forget to uh technically open the public hearing. It's, well, it's been open. Um. But, so I need to go till six twenty on this item based on the agenda, is that correct? At least.
You might be right.
Because that's how it was noticed.
Well, it was, we didn't really put it in their notice, I don't think, um but it was on the agenda that way. Or correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, I don't know if you sent times out on their notices or if it's just on the agenda.
It's just on the agenda, not the notices.
Okay.
Drew, I, that's even hating to be technical about it, but because it went out to the, to the public. As the agenda, we probably still gotta take that more.
No, I didn't, Jeff, don't get me wrong. I wasn't saying we didn't have to. I just wanted to ask to make sure that it wasn't on both. I was just getting clarification. No, it's on the agenda. We have to do it. There's no question, unfortunately, yeah.
I just wanted to be the bad guy, if somebody had to be.
Good, because I'm tired of being the bad guy all the time.
So, so we will go to at least six twenty in our, in our comments, so it's a six oh four now if you. Are watching or you want to make comment on this, um you can go to washingtonc.org slash meetings. Um to. To uh make that comment. Um. And. It'll be, and we'll go to that point, so um. Hope you have some more questions or someone's got some jokes or something if we.
Well, let me go back and give you a little history because again, how the, you know, this will help buy us some time here because, you know, I'm the man of few words, as we all know. Um but uh let me, we, we kind of pointed this out earlier, but uh. Yeah, in between these lots, there was a request both to the planning commissioners and the city council. And I'm talking about lots seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve on this west end over here. And um, and so they did end up uh adding some gap in here, but even more so the. Council wanted a little bit more on this between ten and eleven, so the applicant moved it over as far as they could to this property line. Let me get my. Text pointer. Th- this property line right here. Um the, the unit used to be a little bit more over in this area. And I think they ended moving it seven, seven and a half feet uh that direction under the council's directive. And so these gaps got made quite a bit bigger. I'm gonna change the color. Um. And I don't want to use green because of the field there. So these view corridors. Um ended up being in place to help that. And just as you guys kind of drawn to that earlier, but I just want to make note that it was through the city council's uh final approval that. That those view corridors had to be put in there and, and the applicant ended up doing that to make this a, a better project for those neighbors to the, to west of them. Um also point out that they've put in this grass area. It's not just a detention, but it's a grass play area. Point that out too as well. That was part of one of the things that we ended up with that we normally wouldn't. Um and it still left plenty of room. Um. Over here. On this uh. I don't know why I'm not drawing anymore. There we go. So this area still was able to maintain most of its full use of that play area that the applicant was kind of going for.
Hey Drew?
Yes.
Do you know why the applicant couldn't fully move eleven and twelve past that property line?
Well, the reason was is they were trying not to um push too much into this area here.
Okay.
And you know, that, that was the, the main thing was trying to not, yeah, they could have bumped this way over here, but then it would have shrunk down this big play area.
Would that, would that affected their um, I guess, open space requirement?
No, I think, yeah, it would have, it would have taken some out of that, you know, the percentage on it for the P U D, but. Um it just basically came down. So what they ended up doing, I think a little bit was thirteen through eighteen, got pushed a little bit to the east here. And so that kind of helped them move that, but they wanted to still maintain a certain percentage of that to make it a worthwhile play area.
Okay.
Because what's gonna happen in here if they put a bunch of more gap between ten and eleven, that's gonna be crushed rock landscape area. Really not usable. So really, the only person that had benefited directly would have been this home here. You know, but the rest of it, this would have just been a bigger landscape there with crushed rock, where this over here. Is basically play area and grass area, etc. Does that help?
Yeah.
They were trying to not add a strip here of more open space and lose grass area.
Alright.
Okay, I took up five minutes. Who wants to take the next five minutes?
I, I have a question, Drew. This is Commissioner Hanson about the property, the long-term plans for the property north of it. It's my understanding that that's a hub of some sort of a major grocery type of store, something like that. Is that correct?
The property up here to the north?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's general planned for commercial. You know, and so we're hoping, I mean, it's still quite a bit of acreage that the Andrus is own. Um in fact, let me try to. Let me bring it up. For a second.
Have they expressed any interest over the years of selling that or turning that into?
No, they, they've actually had it out on the market a little bit. Because I've, I've, I've had people inquire to me about it, you know, which I was surprised because I thought they were gonna actually wait longer. Um anyway, I'm gonna zoom down in here a little bit. And again, let me go. I wanted to find the area. Mustang Town Homes is in this blue. Box here. So let me change colors. So the Andrus is still owned up in here. This is general plan, commercial. And you can see it's still a good chunk of land for any kind of decent. Project, but yeah, and I just wanted you to know, I have been contacted, you know. Several times over the last couple, probably year, year and a half of people inquiring about, you know, the zoning, the general plan, the size, etc. Looking there. I just have, nobody's followed up after that, so.
Are the Andrus is still local?
Yeah, they live right here.
Oh, that's them. Okay.
That's Dixie and her son. Live, live in this, this two-story house right here.
What's general plan for the, I guess that's their property, that's.
Yeah, all over here is general plan um, commercial as well. The rest of this. All over here. Well, in fact, I can just hold on. I'll pull up the.
Just because the general plan has it designated for something, the owner can do something far different, correct? Or they can apply for that?
They can apply. They'd have to come in and change this, so. Again, you can kind of see they have all this over here, and they actually have a swath right here of medium-high density. And then neighborhood commercial to the south of that. This has kind of been like this since I've been working here for fourteen years. You know, the Andrus's property really hasn't changed. And again, the area we're talking about is right over here where my arrow is, if you can see that. And again, the Andrus is own all this over here.
Yeah.
On the east side of Washington Fields Road.
Maybe to take up one more minute since we're trying to do that. Um I had heard. In relation to near this, where Stewie Farms is just to the south of this. That the, the gas station and the RV park that we approved, that they had pulled out of that project. Is that correct?
Brandon, have you heard any? I have not heard that. They actually have been in contact with us over the last probably month.
It's, it's been, it's been a little more than a month since I've talked to him, but I haven't heard anything from him.
I was told that they pulled out of it and lost the earnest money that was put down on it, and they're specific to the amounts, and so it's pretty, it's a pretty credible source. But I thought that that was something that you would have been aware of.
Yeah, no, nothing's been said to me.
Nor, nor me, yeah.
Well, he- heads up, I guess.
Okay.
Drew, I think um Premier actually took care of one other condition that was showing the water line on Fields Road back on that plat. If you could go back to that plat, I think that might be taken care of as well.
Alright, let me uh. Now, where, where was it that?
Well, it was, it was uh, let me.
Culinary water?
Yeah, the oil, Fields Road. I think they've shown it. Yeah, they've shown it right there. So that condition is gone as well.
Yep, there it is.
Okay, out on Washington Fields Road, so. Okay.
So is that still condition thirteen, Brandon?
Well, twelve, thirteen and fourteen are now gone.
All gone, yeah.
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 But number fifteen is still in place.
Right.
Definitely.
Which is the new thirteen or the new twelve.
Right. Um we still have seven minutes. I'm gonna ask, it's kind of on our agenda or maybe even part of this meeting, but Drew.
Yes.
Brandon, we're hearing that this. Area behind Camino Real out here where I live and some of the others. The Canal District Property, Washington Canal, that there's proposed trail system coming. And that the city's put aside some money. To do that.
That's always been the plan. Again, I've been here for fourteen years. It was always the plan to run a, uh, master trail system has always been planned. To go along that canal easement.
Right.
And Barry's been more active, Barry Blake, our leisure services director and working with the Canal Company, getting actual. You know, um the right paperwork, I guess, and approvals in place to do that, so. You're probably right. If you have heard that, would not surprise me because I know he's been more actively trying to get areas.
I, I heard that uh there would actually be some movement um next year, twenty twenty one. But that they uh, there's some pushback from some of the landowners who are currently using that area for grazing. And they wanna, they wanna have it changed somehow so that they're, it would stop at their property. And then start again on the other side of uh, of uh. The Silver Falls. Road there. It would stop short of the Horse Hotel and then start again on the other side of the road. Because the Horse Hotel wants to use that for grazing, so.
Well, the Canal Company has the rights over that, and again, we've had. And the Horse Hotel people have known ever since, because like I say, I've known for fourteen years. It's always been planned. That a city trail would go over that easement.
Yeah. Well, I sure hope so. Is, is that gonna be a public hearing thing or?
Probably not.
Probably not.
No, because it's already a part of a master planned trail system, you know? That, that would have already had its public hearing, so to speak.
So as, as an HOA, could we ban together and get a ride to a, a letter to Barry Blake encouraging him to uh. Continue to pursue that? Would that be the right course?
Well, if you wanted to, yeah. I don't know if it's needed or necessary, but. Again, I don't know all the ins and outs yet, but you know, it just, if there was a rumor about it, I would say that it's probably a, a pos-, you know, a right one. Because it's always, always been planned to be that way.
Yeah, you could pretty much take everybody from Lost Creek all the way out to Washington Fields Road and. Or uh Washington Dam Road, that whole dense area that you're looking at there. Um I know that the majority of would support that one hundred percent.
They just finished the trail behind Queens Ridge on the Canal easement. From Majestic all the way to the boundary of Queens Ridge subdivision.
Behind the elementary school back there?
That was done. That's been done, so that, that section's in.
Nice. Yeah, be, it'd be really nice to have that. But that's uh, I've used uh, I've used three, four minutes. Somebody else. Uh that's all I can do.
Is this church?
Ren, is that the area you're talking about where I've indicated in red right there?
Yeah.
Yep, that's correct. That's paved.
Nice. Stopped at Jay Iverson's property, huh?
Yeah.
Yep.
And probably where it's gonna stay stopped.
For a little while. Oh. Well, Commissioner Chairperson Smith, I think you're pretty close to six twenty. You want to start moving that direction?
Yeah. Um. If there isn't, is there any other comments? I think we've probably done that. Um. I don't know if I can really motion it. Ask for a motion on it. What was that, Denise?
Um I just wanted to let you know there are no public comments for this particular item.
Okay, thank you.
Still want to close that public hearing though, Commissioner.
Yeah, I will. I'm just, I'm trying to make it so it is officially six twenty. So. And we're about thirty seconds off, so at this time, uh hearing that there haven't been any public hearings. Um I would look. For a motion to close the public hearing. Um at six twenty.
This is Commissioner Hanson, so moved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second, uh motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner, Commissioner Fitzomfo. Uh in favor, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Fitzomfo?
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Um. Well, who am I missing? Oh, Commissioner Musso. Sorry, my pictures have gone away and I.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Um and I'm an I as well. The public hearing's been closed. Um if there. Are any other comments um or not, I would look for a motion or comments um on commis-, on six A. Let me try to butcher this. So I make a recommend. Patient that, to the. That they recommend the approval of the preliminary plat for Mustang. Valley Town Home Subdivision to the city council based upon the following findings as outlined. Um. With the exceptions of twelve, thirteen and fourteen, which have already been uh talked about and they are on the plat already. And that moves number fifteen up to number twelve.
It's Commissioner Holly, I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Musso, second by Commissioner Holly. All in favor, Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfo?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Motion passes unanimously. And I, we will now move to uh item seven A. This is a conditional use permit. It's also a public hearing to consider approval. Of a conditional use permit C dash twenty dash oh four for the Settlers Point Luxury RV Resort located approximately seven fifty north. Commerce Boulevard. The applicant is Dean Terry.
Thank you. Can everybody see that okay on your screen?
I can see it.
Yes. Alright, the applicant has stated is requesting approval of a. All right, the applicant has stated is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to develop an RV resort park. The applicant is wishing to develop approximately thirteen point eight acres into this recreational vehicle short-stay park resort consisting of seventy-nine pull-through stalls and thirteen backend type stalls for a total of ninety-two um, stalls within the development. There will be provided at each stall enough room to accommodate two automobiles along with the RV unit. The park amenity areas include recreational facilities consisting of a swimming pool, pickleball courts, horseshoe pits, a dog run area, and other open space areas for the customers staying at this particular park resort. The conditional use is being sought due to the nature of the request and the location. This particular use type is not specifically called out in the commercial zones, but hotels, motels are a conditional use within those commercial zones and this most resembles that that kind of a use. Plus, we've uh, done two other parks like this and both they were in commercial areas, so that's being consistent how we've treated them with other applicants. Um, and so we do have one that's probably roughly a half mile to three quarters of a mile, a little bit northwest of this one, the city approved a couple of years back. Um, it's it, I think most of you seen it. It's off of I fifteen, just around that exit thirteen area um, within the city. Uh, staff has reviewed the proposed project, finds that it meets the intent of the commercial uses uh, zones as found in the zoning ordinance. Staff therefore is recommending that the planning commission approve C dash twenty dash zero four, allowing for an RV um, park resort to be located at approximately seven fifty North Commerce Boulevard as shown in your exhibits with, of course, the findings and conditions as outlined below. And um, I'll be glad to talk through, we'll kind of go through each of the the slides here so you can kind of see this is, this one just shows a bit of the landscaping around that in between each unit, you see, you'll find a that green circle is a tree, give some shade. Um, also, this is the entrance area, so you can see the pool. This will be the office and a clubhouse with the pickleball courts. Um, over here, these are the horseshoe pits um, that I'm circling around. And uh, then again, they just have some other amenity areas that are along the way. Um, this area up here is where the dog run kind of goes up in this this particular area up on this northeast corner. And um, and again, it this, on the east side here is where the backend units are. Uh, for those who are good with backing in units, the rest of them are pull-through uh, which we tried to recommend for all of them. I guess there's a few backends over here too, but uh, mostly pull-through units, and then this will be an exit coming out of the project. Um, wanted to find one of the pictures that's kind of show here, we go all kind of zoom in on what the stalls, the typical parking pad right here. You can see they're showing the the RV and enough for two vehicles to come in on the side. Shorter, they can park out here, just to give you an idea of each each one of the sites itself, what it will uh, kind of look like, so. Um. Now, of course, this area up here, it's, there's a great elevation change. I'm just gonna, if you're familiar with the area all along here is quite. Brandon, how high would you say that is? Twenty to thirty feet?
Yeah, it's about right.
Okay, so just to give you that idea, uh, there's a new hotel being built right up in this area here. So that kind of gives you a little bit of the vicinity. Um. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions uh, Commissioners might have on this proposal.
That area directly above it, that's already landscaped with rock, right?
Yes, they put a bunch of decorative rock with some different colors and strike, you know, through there. And again, they already prepared all that. Uh, it's been taken care of. That's a good point, Commissioner Ben. That's on through for bringing that out. Um. Any other questions?
So so is this located between the hill and then that um, those apartments that we approved a couple of months ago?
Well, let me try to show you roughly where we're at here. Um, don't get dizzy as I'm running through here. Um, let me get my pencil and I'll show you.
Yeah, you can see it.
Approve her right here.
Right.
And then this particular area, yeah, it's kind of picks up there and goes in here. So this is the area that we're looking at tonight.
Okay.
And yes, that apartment complex was, you know, on the kitty corner and the rest of it was over here.
Right.
Hey Drew?
This is the area.
Um, with that, with that big slope um, right above the development, proposed development, are there any, um, I guess drainage issues that this piece of property might? I guess we should be concerned about or anything like that?
Brandon, jump on in.
That slope was in uh, engineered by AGC, Wayne Rogers. Um, so it's got, it's got geo- geogrid in there and then they can uh, handle all the concerns for drainage to drain away from that slope. That's why you're only seeing like desert plants and rocks on that hill.
Okay.
They're not, they're asking that no water be put on that slope only if it falls from the rain.
So I guess the the parcels above it, they're supposed to slope towards Commerce Boulevard instead of going
That's correct.
Okay.
Everything sloping away and going out that way and handled into a detention basin out in Commerce Hospitality.
Okay.
So Drew, I have a couple of questions. Um, I know we don't speak in densities when we're talking commercial, but a quote, based on the other, the other uh, similar project that's nearby, I know it's a little smaller size-wise. Um. Are we approximately the same type of density, I guess, for lack of a better term?
Um, to be honest with you, I think these stalls are bigger, so I think that I know it's kind of hard talking about densities when we're talking about that, but I would say that this is a um, lower density park compared to the one that's to the east of it. Because his stalls weren't built like these as, you know, as wide. Um, I say this has a little bit more room to the park than the the one that's existing up there does now. Would you agree, Brandon?
I I I do.
Yeah.
Then can we look at the landscape plan? I just want to look, the other thing that, just looking at the existing one, um, like I'll make sure our trees are are a little bit larger at the beginning. Um, I thought I saw thirty-six inch box, which is probably, that's larger than the ones that were put in on this, on the other one. I just want to make sure that we we hold them to that. Um, I think it'll be a better project for them and I I think it'll, it'll look it'll look better too, to to keep it bigger, look better quicker.
Okay, I guess I have a question with that though. I don't know, I'm not a horticulturist and I don't know trees, one tree from another in all honesty. But this, it's a pistachia chin, whatever that is. How how big is the the umbrella on that tree? Because they have them on every single lot, and are they gonna impede with being able to park?
I believe the spread on that can get as wide as twenty-five feet. Twenty to twenty-five, I believe.
So if you have twenty-five on one side and then twenty-five on the other, how wide are these pads?
I'm seeing twenty-eight feet, Commissioner.
The pads twenty-eight feet?
That's what I'm seeing.
So if you have a spread of twelve and a half feet for each tree, if it's on the lot line, that means you're gonna have, what, three feet? That's not gonna have a spread on it? They're not gonna have tree limbs on it to to drive through? Is my math screwed up there?
Uh, three or four feet, Brian, yeah.
Yeah, that that's a little narrow for an RV.
Yeah, they can trim them and I'm, I'm, they're either gonna get trimmed humanly or they're gonna get trimmed automobily. You know, or RV, you know, you would say that.
I'm just stating the obvious, guys.
Oh, you you're right. And and again, I think, I I say I've seen some parks like this, they do trim them back, because if they don't, they get broken.
Well, and and plus they get pretty tall too eventually, so I mean the, eventually you won't have that problem.
But but it's a good point, Commissioner Musso. I don't, I'm not trying to make like, I I know what you're saying.
It just seems like a lot of trees. You know, I I mean, we need the shade, but it just seems like a lot of trees is all I'm saying, so.
That's odd coming out of a planning commission when it comes to landscaping, right?
You put too many trees there, huh?
Yeah, with too many trees? We don't hardly hear that, but I, your point is taken, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I I Googled that tree while we were talking and it will grow to a height of twenty-five to thirty-five feet and Commissioner Fitzomfo is right, it has a spread of twenty-five to thirty-five feet. So yeah, that's that's a pretty good sized tree. Real pretty, turns real pretty red in the fall. It it's it's a really nice tree, but uh, you know, the liability lies with the owner, so.
How many years does it take to grow to that height?
It doesn't say, Commissioner.
Because that was, that was some of my question. It, I thought about the other RV resort that was mentioned just down the road and every time I drive past there, I think, where's all the landscape? And I'm, it's probably there, but it's so small.
Well.
Bring it up.
This is probably appropriate as far as the level of vegetation, I mean.
Yeah.
It's better to have more trees than hardly anything out there.
So it's just a requirement of the time necessary to build a lot, right?
Say that again?
These are already bigger, I think, than what the the original one. I'm glad they pointed this out.
Yeah.
I don't think the one, you know, we didn't think about that so much. Again, we don't do these that often, these RV parks like this, so they, I don't think they put in thirty-six inch box trees when they built that 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 one over, you know, down the street from here.
Okay.
These are already starting out, I think, a little bit bigger.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good sized tree in a thirty-six inch box.
Good. And and also, if I'm not mistaken, this is not gonna be visible from the freeway because it it drops down, that elevation change, right?
You're correct, absolutely.
Okay.
FYI, this is a real hardy tree, um, drought tolerant, drought friendly, I guess you would say. Um, what I'm reading here, it says if you're looking for the perfect tree, this is it, so.
Must go on cell site.
Yeah.
Provided to you by the Tascio, yeah, Genesee's Foundation, yes.
I didn't ask if the applicant had anything to add or if we had any questions for the applicant. I don't know if he's on or not. Um.
Steve, is that identified number this applicant? It should be Bush and Gudgel, and I think I do, I do know they're on. Adam?
This item.
Adam is on for this item, yeah.
Okay.
Have you been hearing everything, Adam? Okay.
Tree planters here too. What's that? I'm the tree planters here too. Oh, the tree, the tree planter is here too. Dean Terry's here as well and he he agrees, he likes to have some nice trees there, so that was his idea to have the bigger trees in in that area.
Okay. Well, good. Um. We are uh, still on a public hearing until six forty for everyone that's available. Um.
I have a question, Commissioner Holly, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Um, Drew was reading short-term rental on these pads. Can you tell me what that means, short-term?
That for me or the applicant there?
The applicant.
Uh, well, well, I I put that down there because um, I'm, if it's in a commercial area, I don't really want these to be long-term. You know, too long-term, like people living there twelve months a year.
Right, so is that one of the conditions then, Drew?
Um, I don't know if we did make that a condition, but you might want to talk about that.
There are twelve.
The applicant has to say.
Yeah. Go ahead, applicant.
Well, things can change over a period of time, just like the hotel we're building right above there. Things will change and in our CC orders up there, we're very careful when we make the CC orders for that whole top part because down the road, things can change, even in that hotel. But we say the same thing here. Our intent is not to have permanent residents there by any means. We do not want permanent residents. We, maybe you know, maybe you don't. The turnover is where you make the money. If they come and stay longer in any park, anywhere in the United States, we found they get a better rate and it really is a break-even point for for some places in the United States. We've done some research, so we want a turnover. We want, we don't want them to come and stay a long time. There's some people uh, will stay a little longer than others, we know, because of they're, they're living in their, that's their home, you know, and they, but they move from area to area. We interviewed people in Las Vegas at the desert uh, resort there off off the strip. People is there and and uh, they are permanent residents, but in about five different or six different parks throughout the United States. Our intent is to turn them over. Because you turn over, you make money. You don't if you don't turn them over. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, Dean. I don't like the answer, but it does answer the question because you you said that things change. Um, you know, yeah, things change, but what would, what would change for you to make that a permanent park where people are living in it year-round? I can see RVers uh, running away from bad weather or chasing the good weather. But I I I would really hate to see that become permanent trailer park, if you will.
This is not a, this is not a mobile home park. This is not, this is an RV, a sort of a resort park. And so, and just to help you out, the the surrounding area, if you looked at the diagram, those are all palm trees. Uh, we're going to spend a lot of money on real nice grown-out palm trees to make this resort go. Because what are we, we want to have a maximum state.
All right, Dean, that that's a little bit better answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a question for Drew. Are these twelve conditions standard conditions?
Well, no, because we don't stand, this is only the the third RV park that's come in since I've been here, so I would not say it's standard. You know, I've taken it from the previous ones, uh, just because, you know, they kind of worked okay.
Is this similar to the other two then, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
The past, you know, the last two approvals, that's kind of where I took these from.
Okay.
I'm I'm curious, uh, this is Commissioner Hanson with just one general question about did, was research done and that's why they're putting pickleball courts in there? I'm just curious if that's a sport that, I know it's popular, I play it myself, but is that something that these types of people that are coming here often utilize that and they want that at a facility?
Thank you. That, um, we've interviewed a lot of people and they do not want tennis courts, they want pickleball. Pickleball's taking over for tennis, believe it or not, and excuse me, golf also. This thing, we will have, these will both be legal size so that they can do legal competition because a lot of our people will be coming in the higher-end RVs are people that, you know, may say they belong to an association, a national association, a state association of pickleball, and they're ranked. Uh, we have a couple, we've been getting some help from the Fountain Ivans and they uh, uh, they've been very helpful to us because she's rated, he's not, but she's rated pickleball. She really knows the business. She's now working for the city of St. George. She volunteered, but they said, we need you on, and so she's helping them out and being paid for her help because she's helped us and he hasn't charged us, but she's very knowledgeable and she's encouraged it.
That's that's good. I like it. I just, I just didn't realize there was that much demand from people that are traveling in RVs that play pickleball, but I I love the idea. I just wanted to ask that.
Um, if there aren't any other questions, um, it is six forty-one, so did we have any public comment on this item?
Chairman Smith, we do not have any public comments on this item.
Okay, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Hanson, so moved.
Commissioner Holly, second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Mr. Fitz on food?
Aye.
Mr. Smith is an aye. The public hearing is closed now. Um. Any other, any further discussion on the item? If not, I'd look for a motion on, on this item as well.
Commissioner Holly, I'd like to make a motion that this planning commissioner approve the conditional use permit. C dash twenty dash zero four, allowing for an RV resort park be located approximately seven fifty North Commerce Boulevard as shown in the exhibits with the findings and conditions outlined below.
Mr. Hanson, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitz on food?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Um, thank you. Uh, we will go to item eight A. This is a public hearing that, um, for those that want to make a comment, I mean, go to washingtonc.org slash meetings on this or any of the items. This, item eight A was tabled for May twentieth, twenty twenty. It's a public hearing for consideration or recommendation to the city council. Zone change request Z dash twenty dash oh five to change from P C D plan community development to P U D plan unit development located approximately countryway road. The applicant is mid-in LLC.
Hey, thank you. As stated, the item was tabled two weeks ago. At your May twentieth meeting, the applicant was asked by the commission provide written requests for the setback relief shown on the exhibits and give an explanation as to why they are requesting such relief to the side corner lot frontages from the fifteen-foot separation between lots, which is the side yards in this case, and the twenty-foot on the corner frontages. Um, the applicant has provided a detailed explanation to the commission as attached in your reports. And let me kind of show that hopefully you had a chance to read that. It's the exhibit in your packet that looked like this. Redwater's pod two. Hopefully, you planning commissioners had a chance to read it. Um, I appreciate the applicant bringing this to us in this format and they gave, you know, the explanations of why they sought this on this particular property. I'll be glad to let you make your comments. Um, as you probably read through, sorry, that looks like that got superimposed. Hopefully, you're still able to read through that. Um, because this particular idea, you know, the site plan should have been on this page. So I apologize if that's how it showed up to you as well, so. But be glad to hear anybody's comments on the request and, and the explanation of being sought for that relief.
Any comments on this one?
Chairman Smith, no public comments on this one.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Hanson. I don't necessarily have a comment, but I guess I do have a comment. I'm talking. Um, I'm glad they did this. It puts it in the hands of city council, let them decide. I just think it would have been error if we didn't have something like this for city council to consider.
No, I'd agree with that too. Um, I'm grateful for the applicant for putting something together and making it, making it an official request. And, yeah. Okay, so I have a question for staff on this. So the zone change is scheduled for seven PM, um, but it's all these items. So do we need to wait on all eight A through eight C to seven o'clock?
Probably, knowing that there is none on this, I probably would, because again, you tabled this asking them for this specific item. And if one does come through at seven, feel free to go back on your agenda and address it if you'd like. If something comes through to Denise is probably what I'd recommend there. Um, so we won't keep them held on here. Again, I, she didn't have any, any up to this point. Um, so, and then again, this was a tabled item that had a full public hearing, so, yeah, two weeks ago, so.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Commissioner Hanson, so moved.
Commissioner Holly, second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Musso? Mr. Fitz on food?
Aye.
Uh, the public hearing is closed. Any further discussion on, on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion on it.
This is Commissioner Hanson. I'm going to make this. This is not to send to city council, is that correct? It's just for us to approve it?
No, this is a zone change.
This is a recommendation.
It's a recommendation for, yeah, this, this pod and its design. So this goes on the city council, yes.
All right. Uh, this is Commissioner Hanson. I'll make a motion that we submit for approval to city council, item Z dash twenty dash oh five, a request to rezone approximately thirty-three point oh seven acres located approximately two hundred, twenty-eight hundred east countryway from the current planned development P C D zoning to a proposed planned unit development residential zoning designation applicant mid-in LLC with the conditions and the findings contained in our report.
Commissioner Holly, I second.
Uh, a motion and a second in favor. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitz on food?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith is an aye as well. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Uh, we will go to item eight B. This is also a public hearing. The public hearing has been open since the beginning of the meeting. Um, and we, this is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to city council. You know, zone change request Z dash twenty dash oh six to change from open space to R one fifteen, single-family residential minimum of fifteen thousand square foot lots. Uh, it's located approximately east end of Wild Horse Ridge and the app can just Kent Rasmussen.
Hey, hold on, I went a little too far in. I want to bring this back a little bit. Okay. Uh, as stated, the applicant's request and approval of a zone change of approximately zero point seven four acres. Uh, the requested change is, as stated, from the current zoning of open space to the proposed single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot minimum or referred to as the R one fifteen zoning district. The R one fifteen request is for the purpose of developing this zero point seven four acre lot, adding it to the already existing portion of the parcel zone R one fifteen, which you see in your exhibit. The blue area is already R one fifteen. The yellowish-orange area is the area being asked to be added to that. And then the green area is what's left over is still part of his parcel, his ownership. That is up in the high topography range, which is really undevelopable land. So this orange area is, if you've been up there, is a flattened area right at the base of where this really takes off in topography on this ridge. And so that's the part I wanted them to have rezone uh, to allow for his house to fit on there because we couldn't allow it to be in the open space and straddle that. So that's what's behind this request. The surrounding zoning to the parcel is open space to the north and east, R one fifteen to the south, and then R one ten, um, which is Chaparral Ridge, I think, is the name of that development there, and that's to the west. And with that, staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty dash zero six for the zone change request from open space to the proposed single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot minimum, R one fifteen zoning designation. That would be on to the city council. And of course, it's based on the findings in your report. And with that said, I'll answer any questions that the commissioners might have on Z dash twenty dash zero six.
So we're just, we're just talking about a zone change. When we get to flats and so on, we'll talk about drainage and all that stuff up.
Well, there is no plating. This is an existing lot.
Right.
And, um, and so drainage will be addressed. Brandon, you know, we'll see that when they bring, because he still has to add some roadway, I think. Brandon, stop me if I'm not right, you know, speaking right, but there's some things they'll still have to do with construction drawings, I think, to get even utilities up to this particular lot. Right now, they're back here, um, off of Desperado Drive somewhere. You see where the Wild Horse name starts right there?
Yeah.
They might be somewhere here. So they'll have to address all that kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
With that as well, before we get him a building permit. Right now, if you look at it, this blue area, because the road's going to go, let me get my pencil out so you can kind of kind of know what's happening here. The roadway is going to have to be continued like this on that side.
Yeah.
So you can see all that's left in the blue for a house isn't much.
Right.
And this area is flattened up here from, you know, previous when the original owner had it. You know, flatten this little bit of area up in here. And so I just told them to come back and do a simple zone change to add it here because I couldn't let them build on this area up here because it's open space. No buildings are allowed. So that's putting it simply why we're here tonight with this request.
So it's gonna, it's gonna incorporate half of the blue and all of the orange?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be the point seven four.
Right.
Okay. Which is about thirty thousand square feet. So he's talking two lots?
One. It's just going to be one, it's a one dwelling, one building lot.
Wow. Three quarters of an acre.
Well, I think that three-quarter incorporates the green. If I, I think it does incorporate this open spaces left up here. So it's basically a half acre of buildable.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, I'm with you. I know the area and Chaparral Ridge and all that stuff up there.
Yeah, let me, I'll just kind of help. We'll, uh, let me clear that out.
I, I have no connection with Kent Rasmussen, other than I've seen his work and he does good work. So I, I trust that, uh, that this wouldn't be any different.
So it's just right there.
Yeah, you can see it. It's right here. I'll. So you can see where this area here, you know, and that's where I told them to go back. And then everything up here is just wild terrain. And so we're adding this area, you know, basically the zone changes this.
Right.
To be added down here.
Right. Otherwise, that little, what's left, wouldn't, he couldn't build on it. It'd be too small.
Yeah, that's why I say when you, you know, you come in through here.
Yeah.
That's just not a big enough pad.
No.
Through that dirt road that goes off to the right of the screen there, that goes up to the top of that hill, is that an easement? For something?
No.
It's just something that people recreate.
What I refer to as wildland trail or just where people have ridden their whatevers up there. You can see all these different property. I'm going to back out here. Let me, and, uh, oh, let me go to my mouse. You can see the different property lines all up in here and there are no legal accesses of any kind up in there.
Yeah, they ride their motorcycles and their horses along those ridges.
So that big square right in the middle is actually owned by an individual?
That one?
Yes.
Yep.
That's allowing people to access through those trails, even though.
They may not know it because I found out through different sources over the years. A lot of these people have bought this stuff and never even been here. Some of them, the land and the properties up on that ridge.
Yeah.
That are, you know, and, and their, their land locked.
Yeah.
But they were, you know, a judge awarded all these different properties out at different times. And people just bought it because it was a real good price, didn't realize where it was and it's useless property.
So that's not still B L M up there then?
No, most of it's private ownership up in there. Not till you get around the other side.
Yeah.
And now it's actually Bob Brennan picked that up from, because land that he was owed when they took it from the reserve from him. He swapped out for that, that, what's that, Little Valley, Long Valley, Brandon?
Long Valley, yep.
Yeah.
So it could theoretically, it could become residence up there at some point or residence?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
I don't think we can get water pressure up that high.
You get water and it's hillside protected up above there. Um, I just, yeah, there's just no way to do that, I don't think.
Okay.
But never say never, but for the most part.
It could, it could be, but.
Yeah, almost never.
Difficult. Extremely difficult.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I thought I'd bring this.
Hey Drew?
Yes.
Do you know the elevation change for that, the northernmost parcel that?
You mean up here?
Yeah.
I really don't. I think it starts from about two feet right here and rises to maybe, Brandon, help me if you know better. I think it's about eight to fifteen feet.
You've got the topo on the other.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that was one thing that I had on there.
Why not use it then? Yeah.
Just have to zoom in a little bit. I can't see the numbers there, but.
That's as far as it'll zoom.
So those are each two-foot contours, it looks like, so. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve.
Sixteen. Twenty feet, because that's a ridge right there.
Yeah.
And then it falls off the back over here. So it's about, what, Jason, would you say sixteen to twenty feet?
Yeah.
Does that help you?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitz on food? Sorry, I'm biting my tongue.
That's why everyone just calls me Commissioner Van.
And if you're okay with that? I love your last name, though. Don't get me wrong. I do love your last name. I do.
What is the actual correct pronunciation, Van?
That's Sam Foo.
All right.
See how easy it is for him?
Yeah, he just rose right up. He's been saying it for years.
Fed Som Foo. See, I can do it when I just slow down.
It's pretty much correct, other than a little bit of a twang at the end, but it's all good, though.
That's that cowboy in me.
Um, are there any public comments on this?
Denise?
Sorry, I was trying to get to my mute.
Oh, you're fine.
We do have one public comment. It is from Alexander, excuse me, Travis Alexander from the Fields area. And he writes, the last time we had a planning, city planning meeting for a lot next to this one, quotes right above our property, unquote. We voiced our concerns about what development would do about runoff being up the hill above our property. The purchaser of the land told us by, told by the council to be good neighbors, stay in close communication with us downhill and ask for our feedback along the way. None of that happened. They created a whole new mountain of dirt that stands thirty to forty feet above us at a grade that is way too steep. We rarely could get a hold of the owners of the lots as he wouldn't return our calls or V M's. When we did, he would make some excuse about this Ramson, Ramison guy. He was transiting some property to or some of the, some other story that didn't make sense, blow us off. Our yard started flooding and filling up with dirt. Our waterfall and fountain filled up with so much dirt, it burned up the pump, so it stopped working. I have no, I have to constantly shovel dirt out of my backyard from this hill. Now it's been about four years of fighting against the dirt flooding and runoff from this hill. Now it's been about four years of fighting against the dirt flooding and runoff from this hill. We can't get any resolution on retaining this dirt wall that has become our entire backyard view. When I called the city, they told me they take no action on matters like this, even though they approve everything. They told me I'll just have to lawyer up. Now this lot is ne- next to us is up for discussion. What assurance can the city council and planning commission give us? That further development won't increase more flooding and mud runoff? Will they approve everything without recourse as they did before and leave us with the physical and financial burden? Of fighting the elements and the legal battles while they wash their hands of everything they approve? There have, there have to be better rules in place when developments are approved to protect the property and finances of neighbors. Neighboring lots rather than a encouraging wink and nod when telling the developers to be good neighbors. That's it.
Was there an address, Denise?
No, he just lives in the Fields area.
He's on that map, he's on your map with the blue and the orange and the green?
Yeah, he's just in the Fields area.
Yeah, it's Lot fifteen, Majestic Sunset, Alexander Travis. You can see it right there below the word Wild Horse Ridge on the topography screen.
So it's gotta be that lot?
If you get on, yeah, the topography screen, Drew?
This screen?
Yeah, go down.
Go down.
Below the words, right there, Lot fifteen, Alexander Travis, that's the guy that wrote the letter.
So he's saying it's coming across the road?
Yeah, I don't know where the dirt's coming from, but.
Lot thirteen, right there on the corner?
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen.
The one with twenty-eight fifty-one south.
So.
That one, right there in the middle of the screen, yeah.
So the dirt is referring to is on the east. You can look, it looks like that's been placed. At some point, um, somewhat recently.
That's not what we're talking about tonight.
By Mike Stewart.
I am curi-, this Commissioner Hanson, I am curious if there's some kind of a, a response to some of the things mentioned in that letter, because it didn't see, doesn't seem. Logical that the comment from the city, people that I know is gonna be, well, you just have to lawyer up.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't buy that.
There's gotta be a reason or something that this hasn't been done, or what, what do we have to say about that as a city, anything?
Well, this used to be a goalie, if I remember right, behind him, but I'm not positive. Brandon, do you remember, I know that this guy who owns a lot up here brought in a lot of Phil.
That's.
There used to be a goalie that ran through here, I thought.
That's Mike Stewart that owns it and, I mean, I.
You know anything about mudslides and everything else, Brandon?
No, I can make contact with this guy and see what his concerns are and talk to him.
But up here, though, let's, let's address the lot in question up here.
Yeah.
Ken's gonna have to build in, let me get, let me think, Brandon, just. Tell me if, when I need to stop, but Ken's gonna have to, of course, build this other half of the road.
All the way to the.
All the way to here, right?
Yep, yep.
And that's gonna be curb gutter, sidewalk.
Asphalt.
Asphalt all through here.
With all utilities.
So his water's gonna come, changing color. His water's gonna come out here and then down the street in the curb and gutter.
Yep.
Okay. So that addresses that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I empathize with Mr. Alexander's problem. But it doesn't have anything to do with the, with the rezoning that we're talking about.
I can make contact with, with this gentleman and, and address his concerns that he has with the neighboring properties.
It appears that development of the property in this case would probably help more than hinder.
Yeah, with the improvements.
If he's getting, if there's getting dirt down the road, it would improve, you'd have a full. With road path up to his house, and then you'd have a half width on that side, which would, would. Would at least help anything that's coming from there. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the topography, but it should. Should limit that side of the.
And if it's over here, we can't do much about that.
Yeah, I mean, that's not part of the application, so.
Right.
If it comes off the hillside where the red arrows are, the curb and gutter is gonna stop that from going across a half road, is that the idea?
Yeah, there's a, there's a two percent down in the middle of the road.
Yeah, there's a crown up here.
Alright.
So. My question is, why would, why is he gonna have to improve over here? To the south of Lot sixty-two, isn't that already taken into consideration with the development of those lots up in there?
It's the same developer, that's all I was pointing out.
Oh.
Yeah, he, Ken, Ken is developing this area here, you know, with this.
Oh, okay.
And then he's gonna be building right here.
Okay, so I thought we were just doing the one lot, but it's part of, I mean, it's the same developer. It's just an additional lot of that subdivision?
Is that correct, Brandon?
That's correct.
Okay.
The one in front of Lot sixty-two is complete up to the property line, he's just gotta extend it up to this new lot we're talking about.
So it's just basically where the lot is now? Okay, that makes sense, that, yeah, I was, I just was confused when you started drawing, I was going, why would he have to do that?
For this zone change, Commissioner, he'll do this area.
Right, okay, that makes, that makes sense.
But he's also the developer of this over here.
Okay, okay, that's, that's cool.
Well, he, he owns. What is future Wild Horse Ridge, the continuation of it, is he dedicating the entire, the entire roadway there then?
Yeah, what he, what he owns, he's, he's, we've, we've already got, that's been a phase, I think it was phase six. Right there.
With this lot, will, he'll need to dedicate.
And he is, he's going to dedicate his half, yep.
Yeah, he'll dedicate over here, Commissioner, in the blue.
Well, he'd have to dedicate the entire, he'd have to dedicate all, because his property line runs down to the other end, so he'll have to dedicate the entire.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, going south.
Following it, yeah, and then he's only gonna, he's only gonna pave the twenty-seven feet of.
Well, that's true, because his lot line, I see what you're saying, yeah, his property line's over here. But you're only gonna make him build out right now half, right, Brandon?
Half. Yep.
Yeah, that lower blue line where Drew's pencil was, that may be what Mr. Rasme, what Mr. Alexander. Is concerned with that.
Yeah, that, that's something we probably need, I didn't go out there, so I apologize, but. But we probably do need to make sure that that isn't, that that is making it into the road and not making it going into his lot. If it's on, just on that, that little sliver, and then you need to talk to the other property owner too, and just make sure that. You know, to voice those concerns.
Okay.
Do we need to add this as a condition that something will take place there?
I can handle with plants.
Okay.
You demand?
So Drew, correct, so. This is, will this be a one lot subdivision in, after the zone change then?
Well, he, he actually, yeah, kinda will be, he owns both these.
Okay.
Right now, oh, sorry.
I understand, I, I notice there, there isn't a, a lot on it, so, so he does have to, and he's gonna have to dedicate that portion, so there's gonna have to at least be a. A uh.
One lot subdivision for the dedication.
To perform those items, and that's probably where we can. That's where you would see the, the drainage answer. On this, before he could build on it, he'd have to do a one lot subdivision.
Yeah, that was kinda my question earlier, when we get to the Platts and Plots and. And uh, building permits, that's where he'd have to show that drainage.
But if I, I would ask staff just to, particularly Brandon, just to try to get this question, these questions answered and the concerns answered. Prior to any, prior to them showing up with the one lot subdivision, so that we, we will know. If it's been answered and how it's been addressed, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, with no other public comment, I'd look to close the, the public hearing. Commissioner Hanson, so move.
Commissioner Holly, second.
I have a motion, um, all in, and a motion of second, all in favor of Mr. Hanson. Aye. Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Muso?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfo?
Aye.
And Commissioner Smith said aye, and the, the public hearing's closed. Further discussion. And or motion.
Commissioner Holly, I'll make a motion. That we recommend to the city council. Approval of Z dash twenty dash zero six for a zone change request from Open Space. Parentheses, O S, parentheses, to propose single-family residential fifteen hundred thousand square feet minimum. R one dash fifteen, uh, based on the findings below. Applicant is. Omni Development Group LLC.
This is Commissioner Muso, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, in favor, Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Muso?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfo?
Aye.
Mr. Smith said aye as well, motion passes unanimously. Item eight C, this is a public hearing for consideration, recommendation of the city council. Zone change request Z dash twenty dash oh seven to change from. CCOM Community Commercial to PUDR Plan Unit Development Multi-Family Residential. Located approximately eleven hundred East Telegraph, the applicant is Red Vista Development of Orme LLC.
Thank you, as stated, the applicant is requesting zoning of three point six eight acres. Requested changes from, as stated, the, uh, Community Commercial C two zoning to a proposed. Plan Unit Development Residential, specifically using the multi-family development standards portion of the PUD. The PUDR is for the purpose of developing this three point six eight acre into a multi-family residential project. Consisting of eighty-four condominium dwelling units. Each dwelling unit will have two bedrooms and two baths, and again, all the floor plans are the same on this. This particular location has a general plan land use designation of PUD. This designation carries with it a thirteen to sixteen dwelling unit per acre density. I only put that on there because the PUD doesn't specify which, um, but. Because of where the location and it's next to a high-density, uh, project already, then I would, um. Put it in that as the city planner, I would have given it a thirteen to sixteen dwelling unit, high-density, uh, dwelling ratio. Uh, this proposed project will have, as shown to you tonight, twenty-two point eight dwelling units per acre. The surrounding zoning to the parcel is R three to the north, C two to the south and east. And RA two to the west, which is the Turner Turf Farm. Uh, the applicant has provided two parking spaces for each unit, one space being canopy-covered. Uh, which is required to have one covered parking in a residential, uh, multi-family zone. And that has met, and they have also met the visitor parking of one per three point, one parking space. For every three and a half dwelling units in the project. The applicant has also addressed the outdoor amenity areas sufficiently as well as the open undeveloped spaces throughout the development. Included in, in, in those amenity areas is a sports court and uh. Kinda, let me get my drawing pencil here. Uh, show you where those are, the sports court is over here. Um, also, they have pickleball courts that are part of the sports court, it's gonna be one of those configured things where they can add netting and take it out, et cetera. Uh, kinda seeing these, they're multi-use sports courts. Uh, they have a couple of shade pavilions. Here's one, and then another one over in this circular area. Um, they also have a tot lot area, which is this whole circle, kind of a playground tot lot area. Um, they have a turf-lined detention basin that they can play in, which is over here on the corner of the project. And, um, they also have a dog run, which is being proposed back here up in this northeast corner of the project as well. For, to have a dog run for those that have animals, uh, pets in there, so. Um, the landscaping shown seems to be sufficient, let me. We're going to move down. Let's see, I thought maybe, let me see if there's another. Kathy, is the landscaping part in this, did it not get?
I don't see it.
Sign. I know there's a plan specifically for that, that might have not get, maybe didn't get copied through. And I apologize for that, I thought it was tagged on to this, um, particular.
I'm not sure why it didn't go through, because I scanned both of these together.
Yeah.
With the elevations, and so I don't, I don't know why, did the elevations not come through here?
No, the elevations aren't in here either, which, again, they were all together. In the beginning, so we apologize for that, because I thought they would transfer it over and. So, well, anyway, we'll keep moving forward, because I don't have an elbow tonight, unfortunately, to show you good folks.
Just a quick question on that lens, so items, the circled forest by the tot lot by. Is that a grass area, or is that rock scape?
Let me see what the.
Note for it says new amenity area.
Yeah, we can ask the applicant that, they're on the line.
Okay.
And to have that, and so we'll, we'll kinda get that from them. Um, let me keep moving in through, through the report, so, um. Again, I've seen the landscape plan, it, it seemed more than sufficient, the elevations are appropriate. I'm, I'm asking you to take my word for it, but I've kinda gone through all those. Um, the, the issue that falls back that, that is the concern is that the city's density for this area. Again, that thirteen sixteen, the applicant is proposing nearly twenty-three. Now, justification for the increase is based upon the need for affordable slash attainable housing within our community. This developer is proposing that this can hit certain portions of that affordable attainable housing. The project, um, will have sales prices and, which will be FHA Affordable Mortgage Loans. That they are, uh, being able to acquire for the people who live here. The applicant is also providing occupancy control in the, in the. Way that no more than thirty-three percent of the project would be allowed to be investment properties, in other words. People will sometimes buy these, then they just turn them into straight rentals, and they use it as an investment property. But there will be a deed restriction on this prop, this development that says only one-third of those units will be able to. Be bought by investors and rented out, the other two-thirds will be owner occupied. In other words, the people that are paying the mortgage live in the unit. Um, on this case, and that, that'll be a deed restriction placed on the property and will be maintained. It's not just for the first ones, that, that will be a recorded deed restriction on there, so it'll be maintained as two-thirds of it. Will always be owner occupied, um, making this a more appeasing project. And again, falling under with that FHA affordability, uh, making it more, falling into an affordable housing kinda category. Um, now, I will point out that there are, um, uh, credits you can get in our PUD, you can pick up, uh. Extra dwelling units per acre if you do certain things, we have four that are stated in the PUD. The applicant has actually hit one of those four. Um, it, it's extra landscaping along the periphery on the street, and so their buildings are farther back than the average. Uh, they've got the landscape, you know, um, detention areas, et cetera, so the buildings are off the street, they have extra open space along the periphery. Um, which I would give them one dwelling unit credit, so they would. Um, which I would give them one dwelling unit credit, so they would be up to actually seventeen. Um, but they're still short that difference of seventeen to the twenty three of six dwelling units. Um, now, then it becomes, the question is, um. You know, as, as we've stated in our general plan, that to hit and help on affordable housing, that. The city would have to look at its zoning, uh, to help accommodate for that in some way. So the question is, is the city, um, feel like the affordable part of this worth the six credits? The six dwelling units per acre credit that they're asking for, and that's the question. That, you know, um, really will have to be, in essence, answered by the city council if they, you know, approve the project or they don't. Um, and it, and it may be based upon that six extra units per acre, so I hope I explained that well enough for you. On that, so that'll be a city council decision regardless of how you send forth your recommendation on that, so. Now, I do wanna point out, and in fairness to this applicant, that, uh, not too far from here, you have Sienna Hills P C D. Which is a planned community development, that there are, they've been awarded in some of their multifamily areas. Um, twenty two dwelling units per acre as, as the, uh, density ratio within that P C D. That's roughly about three quarters of a mile, a mile down the street. Uh, you see some of those projects being built right now by the Hellhole Trail area and, and that, uh, the park that we built there. The Ninja Park, I like to call it, uh, so some of those projects have that higher dwelling unit per acre. Already awarded to them, I just needed to point that out to you planning commissioners. So with that said, staff would recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty dash zero seven. For the zone change request from community commercial C two zoning. To the proposed plan unit development residential. P U D R with the request on the multifamily residential development standards. That would be bumped on to the city council, and it'd be based on the findings and subject to the conditions in your report. As it relates to indeed that, that proposal, so I'll be glad to answer any questions, and again, I apologize greatly. Uh, for that, those two items not coming through. In here to electronically show you the landscaping and the elevations. So you can, if you, you know, want to table that because and be able to see that. That's totally within your discretion, uh, to do so. Now, we do have the applicant's representatives are on the line as well, if you have questions for them. But if, you know, I, I can help you with anything, please let your questions begin.
This is Commissioner Holly, um, I appreciate that Sienna Hills and some of those other, uh, developments around the corner are setting at twenty two. We're still a long way from twenty two. Even with the, even if the city council decided to, uh, award some sort of bonus for being affordable housing. But I'm just wondering that if in the far north unit. In the orange, a- all the other buildings are sixteen. And if you go to the far east, that unit has twenty, that building has twenty units in it, that one. I wonder if it economically, if it makes sense for them to take that down to sixteen. That leaves us one or two away from, from, uh, from the, something more reasonable. Then the city council can allow them a couple of, uh, points for being affordable, and, and we're right where we need to be. Uh, is the applicant, um, considered taking that down to eighteen or sixteen units in order to get this zone change?
Well, I just did the math for you, Commissioner, it only drops basically one dwelling unit. Um, it didn't drop it that, you know, again, it, it put it down from twenty two point eight to twenty one point seven. So it just basically took one dwelling unit on those three point six eight acres. So it's still, you're still up there at twenty one point seven.
If, if they took it down to what, to sixteen or eighteen?
Yeah, if they dropped that down to match the other sixteen unit buildings.
Yeah.
Buildings, that's fully all that it does.
Yeah, it's four acres. Um, this is Commissioner Muso, can, I have a question in that, um. My mind just went blank, old age guys. Jeez. Um, oh, we, didn't we already previously approve something on this site? Cuz I know these guys came in a couple of months ago with some kinda proposal, right?
A general plan amendment, they had to get it out of commercial into P U D. Yeah, good memory, and that's what this is follow up to, was that general plan amendment now going for the residential, cuz it's zoned. Commercial right now, and it was general planned.
Right, right, okay, so this is the second step. So I guess my next question is then, how big are these units? Did, I, my remembrances, they were like seven hundred square feet, two bedroom, one bath, is that correct?
Applicant, Ben, are you on there?
We're here.
Can you, what, what's the square footage on those units?
They're about between nine twenty five and nine fifty.
Two bed, one bath. Bedroom, two bath, right?
They're, they're all two bed, one bath.
Okay. And what was your proposed price point on these things? I understand that varies.
Appraised, yeah, yeah, we, we just had it appraised in Hurricane, they had to do it twice. Because they couldn't find any comps in the whole county, and it came back about one eighty five, which is exactly what we're thinking on these.
One eighty five, okay. And, and you're proposing that these are gonna be all F H A from, I mean, that's how the, the marketing is gonna be, is they're gonna be F H A.
Yeah, that, that's the secret to these, is that they're gotta be F H A approved, and that's the whole marketing point of this, is that kids can get F H A loans.
I, this is Commissioner Holly, I remember from the first meeting on the general plan. That your price points were different by about ten thousand dollars to the investor, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we're doing, um, it discourages, well, two reasons for that, one is it discourages flipping, where people will come in, put one under contract. Wait to close, make excuses why they can't close, and then we're on building three, and, and they've got a little equity in there. And then they sell it to somebody else and make money without putting any money down. And then, um, it also just discourages investors from coming in and trying to swipe up as many as they can. They can't do that anyway because of F H A requirements, but, um, we charge a ten thousand dollar premium to investors.
Right, and then that thirty three percent is, how do you, how do you get to that, is it? The first thirty three percent first come, first served people, and then you cut it off?
That's, now, yeah, the way that works is, um, the F H A requires us to be fifty percent owner occupied, fifty percent. So we would have this restriction in there no matter what. But as a concession to the city for the density and, and, um, the zone change and everything. We agreed to have it be, that's the highest we've ever done, the most we've ever done is sixty percent owner occupied, and we bumped it all the way up to. The sixty seven percent for this, just to ensure that we're gonna have, uh, owner occupied, so. Um, what would happen is because it's F H A, we have to do one building at a time. So we don't do the whole project all at once, because F H A controls even that. So we will start at, you know, one corner and work toward the other. And, um, we can only sell a certain amount in that one, um, building. And then it's cut off, so we have a project in Provo right now where we can only put six. Um, investor units per building, and once we hit six, we just tell people, hey, it's over, you gotta wait till either building B or C, or. Or, uh, you can't do it at all, but we're at our limit right now for investors.
So on the sixteen unit properties, that would be thirty three, and that'd be approximately five out of sixteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can put them all, uh, so for F H A standards, we could actually go in a sixteen unit building, we could go eight. For F H A, but then we would have to make up for that as far as the city's concerned. In, in the last couple buildings, because they'd have to be all, you know, owner occupied. But, um, so that's how it kinda works, where we had a guy that bought eight in one building, but we were only allowed six, so the next building, we could only sell four. Because we had to make up for that.
That's all well and good, as long as you build all five buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, but that, that's another thing, the F H A will not let us start the next building until the first building is fifty percent sold. Then we can start the next building, and so it's never, it's never, oh, disaster struck, oh, they're half built, four buildings are half built. They're, they're always, it's just one building at a time that's financed and move forward, so we don't ever get ahead of ourselves, it's always sales driven.
And when do the amenities come in, at what point do you do the amenities?
All have to be in before the first building can close.
Okay.
All the roads and all the amenities have to be in.
Tot lot, pickleball courts, all that stuff, retention, it's all gonna be in.
Yeah, so the front ones, yeah, the first one's front loaded a lot, cuz it's got the whole parking lot and, and everything, and the amenities on the first building.
Right, right. Now, that's, on the corner of eleven hundred east and Telegraph, the grass retention area. That, that's a really, really busy corner, do, do you plan on putting a wall or a fence or something to keep the kids in and the, uh. Pedestrians out?
Yeah, yeah, and I can let Ben comment on that, but yeah, we had a city councilman ask the same thing, they wanted, you know, what kinda safety issues and what, yeah, there's gonna be a big, there'll be a rock wall there. Or whatever is allowed by the city, that's gonna be six feet tall. Um, to keep people in and keep people out right there.
Okay, good, good, that's all I had, thank you very much.
So I got another question, and going back to this, you're saying that. Before you start building number two, you have to have all your parking all the way over to. Building, the building that has twenty units in it. So you have to have all your parking, all your, all your infrastructure has to be in.
Yes.
Wow, that's, that's really front loading it a lot. So what's your proposed, what's your proposed build out then, what's your timeframe?
Uh, um, well. That's, again, all sales driven, we, we have a project in Springville, Utah, um, it's eight buildings. And they're putting all the way back to building eight right now, they've got roads going all the way back to a cul-de-sac, and people are asking, hey, I wanna be back there, and we're going, that's. A year and a half away before we even get to that, cuz we're still up on buildings one and two, you know?
Right.
So, um, we only market the one building, and then when that gets fifty percent sold, or so, we're able to start the next building. But we, that's all, you know, depending on demand, and then we'll go, oh, yeah, we, we're on to building two, so. Um, so then once building two, like, right now, we've got, um. We've got eight units sold in our, it's sixteen plex, same thing in Provo, and, and we've got eight build, eight units sold. We've still got some availability in building one, so we haven't opened three yet, be, just because marketing, you know, we could, but we're just not going to yet.
So on your, on your.
As far as F H A is concerned, they, they limit us.
So on your pro forma, what was, what was your assumed build out, I mean, is it a two-year project, eighteen-month project?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we finished one right along I fifteen in, in Orem, we thought it was three years, it ended up being two years, and that's because we couldn't build them fast enough. Um, I, I did a little research here and, and, um, I've got, uh. Right now, there are two hundred and thirty three homes for sale in, in, um, Washington City. And of those, four of them are less than two hundred thousand. And of those, zero are F H A approved, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they're all.
Zero are F H A approved. And so we're going, we're gonna be the only F H A approved project in the entire ci, actually, in the entire county. Will be the only under two hundred thousand dollar condos that are F H A approved. And so right now, we've got, we've got waiting list for the Hurricane project. And the only reason people are not buying them out there is because people are saying, ooh, I'd like to live closer to town, how about Washington, and we're going, oh, wait. Just hold on for a second, we might have something there.
And what's your CAM fees gonna be then, or your, your condo fees?
We are still working on that, but right now, um, with these amenities, um, the reason we don't put a pool in and that kinda thing. Or we don't offer like internet, like package internet as part of it, is because the team has thought through as much as they can, and they've come up with. Um, right now, in, in Orem, it's seventy nine dollars, in Provo, it's eighty nine, in Springville, it's eighty nine. And that's just because for every ten dollars we add, or no, for every fifty dollars we add to an H O A fee. Uh, that's a little over ten thousand dollars less that a borrower can borrow.
Yeah.
So if we start adding internet and pool fees, then they can't even afford these anymore, because. They add those to their budget, and the, and they say, well, you can't borrow as much as you, as you, as you need, so we keep it, we keep it low as we can, so. We're budgeting around under a hundred dollars.
Okay, so this leads to another question, and I'm sorry, but this is the appraiser in me. So when you look at it, when you look at it, so if somebody wants, how are they gonna do like all the dish networks and all that kinda stuff, are you gonna have? Fifty or, well, sixteen dishes hanging off the sides of these buildings, or are they gonna have one common?
No, no, no satellites allowed.
Okay, so what are they gonna use?
It'll all have to be, it, it'll have to be whatever's down in there on the road, Xfinity, or, like, we, we give them a choice. Uh, whatever's in the road, we'll wire the whole thing with, with their coax. And they've got a, they've got to hook up with somebody who can do it that way, and there's no, there's no satellite.
Okay, that works, that works.
That's a really good question, Brian, thank you for asking that.
And then one, one thing I wanted to say about density real quickly, um, we've, we've got, um, and we don't wanna. I, I know the code isn't written that way, but the way developers look at it is, we just do simple market economics for, we look at the density, we do the math. And there isn't one of us out there who says, wow, there's fifty units that we could put on here, let's do thirty. And just leave all of this over here as sellable land that we could have put units on, but we just wanna do that because we're nice. Um, the, the one exception being if they wanna make up for the lack of density by making, uh, a, a higher end, which is going the wrong direction for us. So we'd say, instead of doing three units at two hundred thousand dollars, let's do two units at three hundred thousand dollars, it'll be really nice, and that's where we get an extra hundred out of those units. But that's not what we wanna do here, so what, what we've got is, um. If we were to do sixteen units to an acre in here, we could put about a hundred and seventy seven, uh. Or, not a hundred, we could put fifty nine units, uh, that would be about a hundred and seventy seven bedrooms, they'd all be about three. Bed, two bath, fourteen hundred, thirteen hundred square feet, about eighty thousand square feet of space, where the sales price is probably, uh, north of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So eventually, this, this would just be any other condo project, that wouldn't have any, we wouldn't have a leg to stand on saying, hey, we really like, appreciate it. You know, it's concession here because we're putting a condo project, which is just your regular run-of-the-mill condo project that doesn't have anything to do with affordability. So our development at eighty four units, uh, is a hundred and sixty eight bedrooms, it's less bedrooms than could go on here if we were to do a three-bed, two-bath at sixteen. We limit it to two adults, it's less square footage and space. We meet or exceed the parking, meet or exceed the open space, we're meeting the building height, we're providing the amenities. Um, what happens is, uh, what's eventually gonna happen, and I don't know about Washington, but it's going to happen up north first, is that. People are gonna come and say, wow, you could do a hundred and eighty five thousand dollar condo, you know, two-bed, one-bath condo. What if we knocked another bedroom off, a little bit more square footage, and did a one-bed, one-bath condo? That's gonna be a hundred and forty thousand dollars, but we're gonna wanna put a hundred and fifty of them in here. Because that's how many we could fit with the parking, and the exact same massing of the buildings, it would look exactly the same as it does right now, but there'd be a hundred and fifty units in there. And we want forty one units to an acre. And so what we're saying is that the density here is, we're stacking nine hundred and fifty square foot units on top of each other. And the way it works out is that, uh, meeting the parking and open space and everything else, it's actually less dense bedroom-wise. You know, you're not allowing three unrelated singles in there, it's less dense bedroom-wise, parking-wise and everything, than would normally be able to go in there. Um, because we're trying to keep them small and affordable. And so, you know, the whole package that we put together allows us to offer an attainable condo product at a great price, and it's not. Because we're packing it in, you know, as many as we can, it's, it's that, this is the size of the unit, and this is how many would fit on there, and makes sense.
Commissioner Holly. Those are all really, really good points, but I have a question for Commissioner Muso. To your knowledge, are these units qualified F H A, one hundred and eighty five thousand dollar loans?
Well, the, the amount, there's, there's a lot that goes into qualifying for an F H A loan, but that, the. The numbers below the threshold, I think the threshold for F H A is four hundred and nineteen or something in that regard, I'm not a, I'm not a mortgage guy. So, I mean, the, he's pointing out that the keys are the, the, the ratio, the fifty percent ratio.
Right.
Because it has to be below that, or the whole project doesn't qualify. So they're clearly, they're clearly gonna meet that standard. The other thing about the F H A is, is that they have to be owner occupied. It's not that somebody can get an F H A loan and then turn around and, and rent this thing. Now, after a period of time, they can, but initially, they have to be, they have to be, uh, owner. Now, after a period of time they can, but initially they have to be, they have to be, uh, owner occupied. That's just, that's just the way it is with-
I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking nine hundred and twenty-five square feet, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That's two hundred dollars per square foot.
Yeah, but find me anything that's not two hundred dollars a square foot right now. There just isn't, there isn't anything, there's nothing, he was absolutely correct in stating there is very little and there's, I can't think of anything that you can buy under two hundred thousand dollars right now in the market. You know, unless, unless it's garbage, you know? So, and especially new. The only, the only concern I have, and I love the project, I, you know, I'm on board with it. I just, I drove down from Hurricane yesterday, coming down, you know, past Coral Canyon and then down the ridge. And you overlook that right now and all you see is freaking buildings everywhere. You know, there are apartment buildings everywhere. And it's just, yeah, and they're just, and they're big. I mean, they're really big complexes. I'm, I just, the, the traffic out there on that end of town is gonna be horrific here very, very quickly. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure Jason has, you know, plans for lights and everything else out on Telegraph, but my goodness, it's gonna get, it's gonna get ugly out there, especially when you add in then some of the, the places where the seniors live. And you get them driving twenty miles an hour. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. It's gonna be tough. So. But I, I like the project. I think, you know, from an affordable housing standpoint, it, it works, you know, from that, that regard.
So it will be four-story?
Yeah.
Hey, do you guys see the updated? I was able, thanks to Steve, our magnificent IT and IS director. Are the elevations showing up on your screens?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Okay, so here's what they do look like. And they are four-story, but they're under the forty-two feet that is allowed in multifamily.
Right.
What do you have to have to have an elevator? Can you go four stories without having an elevator?
Yeah, it's because it's, it's on the, it walks in right on the front. There's no stairs. There's no garden level. So, yeah.
And there, there's a certain amount of ADA unit. And so we, we have this ratio that you have to hit. And so as long as we hit those ratios, then we're fine from a, from a ADA standpoint. So this project would have three, uh, three units. And of course, all of these would be fire sprinkled. They're all, uh, it, it kicks up into the multifamily fire rating. So they have the double air sheet rock and type X and all that stuff with fire rating and fire sprinkling and so on and so forth. So.
I would assume that the lower units are gonna be the most expensive units then. I can't imagine them having a, a top floor unit being the same price as the lower unit.
No, it's actually opposite. That's the funniest part is that the kids buying this, it's all young sing- or young, just getting married. Um, not quite married yet. So the, the bottom floor fills up and that's like older, older couples or people who are a little smarter. But the top level ones are vaulted ceilings. They have like ten-foot ceiling. And when people walk in there, they're, oh my gosh, I want this. And so the top floor units are the most, end units are most expensive, top floor units most expensive, and then bottom floor is slightly less.
Until they carry, until they carry their groceries. Yeah, until they carry their groceries and get their steps in, I guess, you know?
Yeah, it's because of me that they've been selling because the model unit in Orem is on the bottom floor and I'm always, I really like this. And so we've been selling the bottom floor. And then when we finally had a model with a top floor, all of a sudden those ones started selling because they went up there and said, oh, gee, these are great. But, yeah, that, that's just because I was, I'm always the one going, yeah, it's great. Just park and walk right in.
Uh, can you, are the elevations on your screen now too?
Elevations and the landscape.
Okay.
So, I've got, I guess I have a little bit of a cons- well, I have a concern and, and I enjoy the project. I like the project. I don't think it's a bad project. Uh, my concern is, I think that the, the density that you're asking for is above my pay grade. Now, from a planning commissioner's point of view, and how I view a planning commissioner is that I look at, at the ordinance and say, well, it's gotta meet the ordinance. And, and I'm not saying that city council can't change that bit, but from my point of view, I can't, I can't approve something that doesn't meet the ordinance. And, and that's my concern. We don't have the, the leeway to, based on my opinion, we don't have the leeway to go from a maximum of sixteen and then go to twenty-two point eight. Um, and I understand how you look at it and I understand that that's, that's the way it is. But, but I don't have that leeway. I'm not saying the city council doesn't have that leeway, but I personally don't have that leeway because I, it's just above my pay grade, I guess is how I'd say it. I, I don't have that, I don't have that ability. Um, and so that would be my concern. Um, I'm not saying that I dislike it. And, and I want to make sure that the minutes reflect that I, I have nothing against it, other than it does not meet the current ordinances and how they are written.
So Drew, isn't that part of what doing the PUD allows you to do though? Because the PUD doesn't have a strict density unit per acre?
Well, well, it, 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 it kinda does in a sense. Like I say, I, you know, I took it because of its location and jumped you up to the high-density park. And, and again, we gave you one extra one because you did hit one of the, you know, that's why my point is gonna be is that there is a criteria that allows for higher density. And, you know, you can meet those, but you guys met one of them, so it's at seventeen, you know? But, uh, the PUD, you know, it did allow for those credits, but this is a unique thing again that you're asking. And again, I think Commissioner Smith is right, is that it sounds to me like he likes the project. He, he doesn't have a problem with the project. It's just he has a limit of seventeen dwelling units per acre, you know, tied around him. Now, the council, because it is PUD, has probably more that option to say, you know what, my code, my general plan talks about affordable housing and that, you know, part of one of those criteria we use for it is that the city has to look at their zoning regulations. But the only one who can jump over that is the city council. The planning commission doesn't. So, I mean, don't be offended by that. Just know that I think their hands are a little tied, but you still, this project does go to the city council. You know, and they, they actually have, you know, can uphold, amend, or, I mean, modify the planning commission's motion. Or, you know, a recommendation. So I think, you know, Commissioner Smith is just pointing out to you that he likes your project, but it's hard for him to do a recommendation of that without having the city council saying, hey, yeah, we're fine with that.
So how is it, how is it allowable that we're letting those apartments get at twenty-two?
Cause it was in part of their PCD zoning. They actually have that as part of their, their, uh, um, design guidelines. Put that in and this, and a planning commission and a city council looked at that and recommended that they're okay with that to go for one of the things allowed in the multifamily in a planned community development. PCDs have a lot more uh, width and breadth and everything else to them because, you know, there's a lot of things that the PCD's saying, city, we're gonna give you all these other things that straight zoning doesn't give you. You know, and you're seeing everything upfront of what our, our master development's gonna look like. We're asking for this. And the city agreed to give them twenty-two in CNA hills.
Then I guess my question is, so why did we go through the zone change and not make this a PCD?
It's not big enough. A PCD is two hundred and, two hundred and one acres or more. A PUD is one to one ninety-nine. So it's about acreage.
Okay.
So how do we recommend this for approval then?
Well, you, you can feel free to do what you want, but I mean, I would take into what Commissioner Smith said, just say, we understand this, you know, if you guys feel collectively you want to do that, you have that ability to do that. It's a recommendation. You're not changing the code. You're just making a recommendation. Commissioner Smith is just stating, if I, and I don't want to speak for him, Commissioner Smith, you can jump in, but he's just saying he feels uncomfortable doing it because the code only limits seventeen for, for you guys. That's what he's saying.
And I agree with Commissioner Smith. I don't know how I could recommend to the city council approval of something that doesn't meet current ordinance.
And that's understandable.
So, hey Drew?
Yes.
Hey Drew, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there just as a discussion item, because I know obviously this, this kind of thing does not exist in the actual zoning regulation, um, as far as what your high-density per unit acre would allow. Or nor, nor even in the PUD. But in the Washington City Affordable Housing Plan, which has been adopted, it does have on the, um, I'm just looking up on page twenty-five, has three strategies for increasing opportunities for low to moderate income in households. Number one is to promote first-time homebuyer down payment assistance. Number two, to offer incentives to developers to provide affordable low and moderate income housing by expanding the zones in which the density bonus apply and offer low deferred impact fees and considering establishing a sliding scale impact fee. So the first part of that is obviously to incentivize the developers by expanding the zoning as a density bonus that's allowed. So in theory though, that is, that whole affordable housing plan has been adopted by the city council. And therefore, that is available as something to say, hey, we, we recognize the need for this. And that is one of the strategies that we know we have to do in order to make this work. So would that not be a mechanism then that has already been adopted to say, yes, we have in fact provided a density bonus and expansion of those zones to an affordable housing project through that affordable housing plan that was adopted in two thousand seventeen?
No, I get what you're saying. I totally agree. Other than, and I know it's being, it's semantics on the, the way it's read. But it's the city council making the incentive to a developer to do that.
Right.
This way you're coming in as the incentive, as the, as a developer to the city council, which is fine. Don't get me wrong. I'm not saying how you're doing it or how we're not doing it is right or wrong. I'm just saying the way that's written, the city could go out and say, hey, in a particular, we're, we're offering out for people, you know, we're gonna give you higher if you'll bring back this to us. That's the incentive that we would do to offer that. You're the one coming with the request to do this. And that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying it's wrong. Don't get me, you know, I, I want you to appreciate what I'm saying is that it's, and, and it does, and it could fall on, that's your, that's what you want to hang your nail on when, you know, um, when you go to the city council. And that's one thing you, you know, want to put down. This group doesn't have that ability.
Yeah, and I, I can, right. And I completely understand where Commissioner Smith's coming from because it doesn't specifically lay that out in there. It's, it's also though, we're kind of going into uncharted territories here where this hasn't occurred yet. And, you know, we really haven't had this specific type of a plan with an FHA approval with then the higher density come in. And so again, I think we're just trying to navigate to how best to, how best to approach it and how best to achieve that. Um, but there is that, I mean, technically there is that mechanism through that affordable housing plan that has been adopted. But yeah, like you're saying Drew, how do you cross over? Well, is it the city that's offering that or is it the developer that's asking for it?
Right. And, and again, don't get, I just want you to understand, you're doing everything the way you need to do it, the way I'd recommend you to do it. You're doing that just fine. It's just that commissioners have to feel comfortable in their recommendation. Again, even if they recommend it as even a denial, listen, I'm just gonna jump and say, worst case scenario, if they did that, I wouldn't really lose a lot of heartache over that. Cause it's the city council that has to make that decision if they're gonna accept that to help with affordable housing. And they're the only ones here that can do that. And I hope you guys appreciate that.
Sure. Yeah.
So can we make a, 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 a motion to recommend to the city council consideration and not approval?
You, you can make any recommendation you'd like to commissioner. And if you want to still put it forward like you're really in favor of this, just say a part of your motion. We'd like, we'd like to recommend approval, but the zoning only allows up to here, but we still like the project. And you're voting on the motion that you like the project, but knowing that the code only allows you guys to go to set, I mean, feel free to make that motion. It's not a wrong motion. It's just not real complete in, in essence, but I think that would be appropriate, to be honest with you. Cause again, as Ben stated, we're in uncharted waters right here on this development and with affordable housing and et cetera.
Thank you, Drew.
Um, I guess I should ask if there's any public comment on this before we get too much further involved.
Yes, we have eight public comments on this one. Are you ready for them?
Yes.
Okay, the first one is from Anna Marie Red. Oh, yeah, Anna Marie Red. Hold on just a second. She's in the Fields area. Trying to scoot this over so I can get it all on here. It states, my daughter is in school and dating. Our fear is when slash if she gets married, there will be nowhere for her to be able to afford to buy and start that process of life unless she has a really high-paying job since there are, since there is nowhere like this for her to have the opportunity to buy. We fully support attainable housing coming to Washington City. The next one is from Jeff Niff. He's in the Fields area. Sorry, my screen keeps moving too fast. I apologize. Hold on. Okay, he, he wrote, oh my gosh. Moving too fast. Okay. Um, he wrote, we moved to Washington slash St. George out of college and lucked out on a home, on a house. Over the ten years we lived in Washington, our company struggled hiring because either we either had to overpay for the positions or we couldn't fill them due to unaffordable housing. They couldn't afford to live here and start a career. We had to downsize as a company and ended up opening in Northern Division in the Salt Lake County to be able to hire and grow the business. It was simply too expensive to find good help while we were in Washington. The next one is from Erin Warner, from the Coral Canyons area. He writes, my wife and I live in Santa Clara. We love this project because it gives our area such, it gives our area so much needed opportunities for young marriage to get affordable housing that they can own. Our fear is our kids will go south to Vegas or north to Provo slash Salt Lake City. Um, it seems like a great project and something that isn't available at all in Washington slash St. George. The next one is from Jeff, um, Heniman, I believe. Sorry, I hope I didn't slaughter his name. He is from the downtown area. He writes, I have a daughter going to school at Dixie. She is married and paying too much in rent because she has no other choice. With Dixie going division one, it is going to grow and the, the married students will either continue to be gouged by paying rent or not move to the area because there is nothing to buy. The next comment is from wow, um, sorry. My, this is such a touchy screen. The next one is from Riley Barn, Barneys in the Washington Fields area. She writes, we love, we live and love Washington. We love our neighbors and our community. However, we were renting a dumpy apartment and wanted to progress. The job I had wasn't paying enough to afford the huge jump in cost to own a home. We searched and searched and there was nothing remotely close to our range. We had one kid and something like these condos would have been perfect for us. Unfortunately, it didn't work out and we ended up moving up to Northern Ogden. It's sad because we, it's sad because we love it there. I just couldn't justify paying for a dumpy apartment that I could have a brand-new condo that was mine. The next one is from Haley Cooper in the Washington Fields area. Darn it. She writes, I li- um, I live next door to this project. I'm renting one of the townhomes in Bristol Parks. Bristol Park, sorry. The owner is selling it, so we have to move. We can't afford to purchase in the place where we currently live, but want to stay in Washington. We can't afford anything around here, so we are most likely going to have to move if we no longer want to rent. The next comment is from Janey Morley in the Washington Fields. This project is a wonderful opportunity for young adults, married, and young families to be able to purchase and start an investment rather than having to pay monthly rent. I'm so looking forward to this project and the many people that it will benefit. And this is, and the wonderful asset it will be in Washington City. The next one is from Bruce Dickerson from Coral Canyons. Um, it's our last comment, if it would hold still. It says, I fully support affordable housing in any city. I have seen how young adults have benefit from these types of residential developments. That's all there is. Wait, let me check one more place just to make sure something hasn't come in in the last couple. There is another one. Uh, it's a repeat from the one before. It says, it's from Bruce Dickerson. I fully support affordable housing in any city, and I've seen how young adults have benefit from these types of residential developments. It was on there twice. That's it.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, hearing those, I'd move to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Holly, so moved.
Commissioner Hanson, second.
A motion and a second in favor, Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Musso.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye. Um, the public, the public hearing is closed. Um, further discussion amongst the commission. Yeah, I I I want, I want them to know that my opinion would be probably significantly different as if I was on city council. But I don't know. A lot of those things that are even brought up in the, in the, in the plan that you read, they are still financial decisions for the city, which I think is out of my, out of my expertise and what I'm supposed to be doing here. I'm supposed to be looking at, at the the letter of the law, and I, and I understand that the spirit of the law is completely different, but the letter of the law is kind of how I have to look at it. And it's probably something we need to look at as, as a city to, to allow for this. And so I, as much as I I say that, I I just don't know how to, how to recommend an approval on this personally. Based on that information. Now, if I was on city council, I don't know, that might be a different, that's probably a different.
I think we need to start looking outside the box at times. You know, I, I don't see a whole lot different for a project like this at twenty-two units than you have the stuff up the road. And this is going to be, in the long run, a lot better project because their owner occupied. You know, so, you know, we have one code that says, yeah, you can do this because you're at a hundred plus acres or whatever the number was. But you can't do it because it's a small project. And it's like, it's still twenty-two units, you know, per acre. But this is, again, I would say it's a lot more desirable because the simple fact is that you have homeownership. And the chance of this being a trash heap in in two years is, is unlikely compared to, compared to some of these other things that we've seen that that turn into, to issues over time quick. Now granted, yeah, does it follow the letter of the law? No, it doesn't. However, you know, I think we need to really start, you know, backing up what we're saying when we say we want affordable housing. Then we need to step up and do something about it as opposed to, you know, washing our hands because we're afraid to do something about it. I'm sorry, I, I'll get off my soapbox, but, but that's kind of the way I feel about it.
You're fine. I don't disagree with you.
No, I know you don't.
I'm looking at this as I don't, I don't see this as a negative if it went to city council as a recommend for denial. Not suggesting that's what we should do, but if it did, all that's going to do is draw attention to city council a little bit more. Why did we deny it? We have the ability to put in there that we really like the project, but we're denying it because of this. And that, that's their determination, not ours. So I can understand that. I mean, I could go either way, whatever is best for the applicant. I don't, I'm not trying to shut it down and think it's not good. I think it is, but if it's a technical issue, then let's address that the best way we can.
This is Commissioner Holly again. I'm totally in favor of this project. Um, I, I kind of look at this letter of the law, if you will, like C C N Rs. What do the C C N Rs say? That's what you have to abide by. Well, what does the letter of the law say? Says seventeen units per acre. That's what we have to abide by. But I would be in favor of recommending to the city council that they consider or deny whatever will get it in front of the city council so that they can take it up. I like the project.
Well, I would consider a recommendation if we're past, we're done commenting.
Commissioner Van, I I know, uh, you're muted, but, uh, I remember you saying when we saw this the first time, that's how you got your foot in the door was a, a unit like this and, and that you were able to take the equity and upgrade and, and I, I, I just think it's a great project and, and I have three sons who I would love to see to be able to get into something like this. So.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm in favor of this project, too. Um, you know, we actually lived in Bristol Park Town Homes.
Right.
Which is right above this proposed development. And that's how we got our kind, our foot in the door as far as, you know, as far as homeownership. Ours was a town home, but we built enough equity in it over, I think, four years to finally eventually afford a single family home. And I mean, I can see how some, a project like this can help people move up as far as housing instead of renting.
Well, even if the market doesn't go up so that they're, they're building equity, 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 the, their rent would still be so low. The, the payment, which is, is the rent essentially, would still be so low that they could still afford to live there.
Yeah, I mean, this seems like a better option than paying thirteen, fourteen hundred bucks a month for, uh, an apartment.
I'm good with it, fellas.
Is, uh, Attorney Starkey still on the, on the phone or online? Is there any problems thus recommending it for approval when we don't have the ability to do that?
Yeah, and I apologize. I've had my hand up. I just don't want to interrupt you guys because I hate that over, especially staff jumping in on your guys' stuff. I, I'll be honest with you. I just, I'm not sure what we're wrestling with so much here when, because what you're saying is just so clear. I mean, ludma is what it is. You have a planning commission is there to give recommendations to a city council. If you're somehow hand tied into things you can and can't say, it doesn't make sense. It seems like what you're recommending is based upon what they will be able to or won't be able to approve. Code is what it is. That's the one thing about it. Code is code. You do have to comply with code. So you don't get away from that. But the reality is, is that, that you recognize there might be a provision that we have in our affordable housing portion of our code that might be adaptable to this, that would make this, the, the rigors of the code, if you're trying to put it into what it would fit with right now without having some leeway with the Affordable Housing provisions. You've seen it. You've read it. You know how that applies. You're saying all the things that I think that the council would want to hear from you guys. Other than the fact that you're recommend, we can't recommend approval of it under current code and without some modifications or adjustments. But those adjustments would have to be based upon other provisions of the code that we would recommend that the council consider in order to provide greater density here. I mean, I, I just, I don't know why you can't say it that way. That's exactly what you're saying now. I would just say it that way. And that's your recommendation. We recommend it. If, if it goes straight through under code with no adjustments to the, to the densities, that your recommendation is that it has to be denied because it doesn't fit code. However, it's our preference that we recommend to the city council, that the city council consider making adjustments based upon Affordable Housing provisions, which may allow this project to go through, which we highly support. I think that's pretty clear to the city council based on that, because you do got to follow code. Chief, Chairman's right. Code is code. You do have to follow it. But that's why you have these other things written. So that'd be my only suggestion. You guys are saying it all. I don't know why you just don't make your motion that way.
Well, I thought a long time ago to recommend denial because it code is code, but I don't know how to turn it into what you just said. Certainly not as eloquently as what you just said because that makes sense to me.
Uh, so, so, so we make a motion based upon what, you know, Jeff Starkey just said and have, have Kathy phrase it that way for us in the minutes.
You guys have been saying the whole thing. I didn't say one thing you guys didn't say. I'll be honest with you. I just, I, I just see the, how it confounds one, a person, but I think ludma was written as exactly for that, or to take the experience that you guys have. You guys are appointed as rec, people who give advice to your city council based on what can be done in your city. You guys, in some ways, it feels like you guys ought to be able to just kind of free ride this thing because there's no, because it's not a condition you use for, this isn't the last of the line. You're not the legislator. You can kind of free roll on these recommendations about how you feel. I think you got more leeway than you think you do because it's really just recommending.
Well, I guess, for me, I don't, I don't, I want to vote however it's going to get this to city council and make the decision. I keep in my mind going, it makes sense to me that it's recommended for denial. It gets their attention. Why is it denied? Oh, that's why. Okay, now we're going to handle that. Because I don't, I don't know if I'm comfortable recommending for approval when I know I would think legally I can't. I'm just, maybe I'm going too far. Maybe I'm looking right past.
Well, real quickly, there's no, there's no requirement you, that you give legally good advice. And you have no right legislatively to approve it anyway. So I don't see why you couldn't use any of your recommendation. If nothing were to change and if the city council did not adopt or adjust the application so that a higher density could be used for the affordable housing, we would have to recommend it be denied because it doesn't fit in the code. However, if the real, if the city council were willing to do what we would recommend, and that is use our Affordable Housing provisions and other provisions allow a higher density to fit the project as it was presented to us tonight, we would recommend the city council do that. And once those higher densities were met, we would recommend you approve it that way. That's how I think you could do it.
Okay.
Anybody feel comfortable making that motion? I understand exactly what Jeff's saying.
Go for it.
It's just a matter of spitting it back out, Bonnie.
You're the one making the notes, Commissioner Hanson.
I'm trying, and I, I don't even know if I'm going to make sense of it, but I'll tell you what.
Go ahead and try it. I'll help you out.
Okay. Let me just a second here and make sure I've got the right one up here. All right, I'll make a recommendation to city camp that we approve, recommendation for approval to city council. Z dash twenty dash oh seven, a request to rezone approximately three point six eight acres. Located approximately northeast corner of Telegraph Road, one eleven hundred east from the current commercial C two zoning to a proposed planned unit development residential, multifamily development zoning designation. Consistent with the recommendation, I'm sorry, consistent with the findings and conditions that are listed in our report. I need to ask this on the side. I'm also, I'm wondering if this is a condition that we're adding or if it's just the verbiage that we're suggesting the city council needs to look at this.
I think you're doing, you're saying conditioned upon our recommendation that in order to approve it, as we recommended, we recognize the city council is going to have to utilize our Affordable Housing provisions in order to somehow get a higher density as the project's been, uh, presented. Otherwise, it doesn't fit the code. I think that's all that's needed for it now. Just remind them, we know you can't approve it unless you do something that gets us past how we're locked in by the code just as it's written now, that you're going to have to add some additional density based on Affordable Housing or other provisions. So just recognize that you know that you're, they can't just add, you know, pull it out of the sky and prove code that's not, that's not applicable now. But they're going to have to use something else, other tool available to them in order to reach that. And if they can't, then they shouldn't do it.
In my motion, I want to add condition number thirteen that the city council, look at the comments that are made in the notes with regards to higher density, that they're going to need to adopt or adjust something, uh, probably under the use of the affordability condition to allow this to pass, to allow this to pass the motion, the, uh, the vote from planning commission. How's that? I hope that makes sense.
Okay. I think your record's going to be clear. I just think the record's really clear in what you've said. And I think that this is, that's the reason Drew was so positive in his, in his description and explanation to you of this project. But even Drew admitted it doesn't fit code unless something's done that the city, only the city council can do to get it there. So I, I, I think it's clear. Drew, I don't know what you think, Drew. I think they hit it.
Yeah, no, it's good. And, and again, with all the minutes, they'll, they'll know where we're at, where you're at.
I, this is Commissioner Holly. I second that motion.
Okay, so I have a, a motion to recommend approval um, with the conditions in the added statement from Commissioner Hanson. I have a second from Commissioner Holly. Uh, in favor, Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzon.
Aye.
Mr. Musso.
Aye.
Aye.
I am a nay just because I want to be different.
Kathy knows better.
Dude, well, I'm a nay because I, I would, I would still recommend denial with the, the caveat the other direction, saying that I, I, that's the only thing. I, I agree with the, I agree with the motion. I would just go the other direction with it. That's it.
We're kind of saying the same thing different ways, right? Because I originally wanted to do exactly that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the minutes is going to pick up all of that stuff. Council's going to know exactly what we're trying to say.
Okay.
And just so everyone knows, we have Councilman Ivy was also there, so he can relay. I'm, I'm sure he'll remember. He's probably got a photogenic memory of exactly, he'll have it completely down. So he is, he's also, so. Um, thank you, applicant. Moving to.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Moving to item nine A. Um, this is a public hearing for consideration, recommendation to city council, a general plan amendment, G dash twenty dash oh four to change from low density to income, neighbor commercial. Now located at fifty eighty east Washington Dam Road. The applicant is Kimball Gardner.
This is Commissioner Holly. I would like to remind Commissioner Smith that I recuse myself from participating in the vote. Um, my wife works for the man and I'm a close personal friend.
Thank you. And then also Commissioner Musso had recused himself, right?
Correct. From, from the vote, but we can discuss it, correct? Yes.
So. Go ahead. Yeah, I've, I also have talked about a con- I also have talked about a conflict for sure. And so I guess as far as staff goes, I, I think we have to have Commissioner Henry, correct?
Well, if, if you stay in. And don't think you have a conflict, then I have yourself. Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Fitz, Fitzomfo. Three of you can vote, but you have to be unanimous. Now, if you do take yourself out, you only have two. And we still have to hold, because we did advertise, we'll have to have the agenda item. But then you can, you would have to then table till you had Commissioner Henry. Who would then make. The other two beside yourself, Commissioner Smith and him for a three, and they still have to go unanimous.
Hey Drew, I had a question for you, this is Starkey. Just what you're feeling on this Drew, so. I just know historically, the reason we do the. We're very, we're very conservative, our city and our, and our elected and appointed officials are in terms of. Not wanting to confuse the public for conflict at all, because these typically aren't even legal conflict under state law, they're just. Counsel or planning commissioner just being conservative and want to make sure nobody gets, thinks that anybody has leanings towards. Folks that they just don't feel comfortable with. The, the issue that comes up, I think that, that you guys might want to just discuss amongst yourselves, selves is. If you're going to remove yourself from the vote. Recuse yourself from voting because it's enough of a. Conflict, even if it's not a, a legal conflict, it's just because your wife works for this person, your son, you know, dates somebody's daughter who's there. Whatever the reason is, I think you run the risk. Of having the public, especially an online meeting like this, of having the public be confused as to. Why you participated, giving, giving your feelings about why it was a good project, why it was a bad project, whatever it was. But then you, but you felt too conflicted not to be able to vote, and I just don't want. I just hate giving folks a reason to think. That you're not being completely ethical when you've gone out of your way to recuse yourselves. I'm just saying.
Yeah, in essence, what he's saying there for the commissioners who are taken out. Is that if you're not going to vote, probably don't be part of the discussion. Yeah, I think there, there's a conflict there as well.
I think it sends a mixed message for me to comment, but not vote. So I'm not going to comment at all, and I'm not going to vote.
Okay.
The only conflict I have with that statement is, is that. I still can comment during the public comment, but not as a commissioner. Can you do that?
Good point, that's why I mentioned online, because I think it's really clear to the public at public hearings. Because I've seen council members do this a number of times, but they recuse themselves, and then they sit in the audience almost. So the public is very well aware, I've separated myself. So there's no confusion, I have, I'm not. I'm not doing anything even close to being unethical, because you, because you guys aren't. I hate it to get the, to leave that impression, but it's up to you guys, because you're right, nothing says you can't do it. I, I just think, I hate for people to think somehow you recuse yourself. And then you argued for or against a project for the very reason they're going to think why you recuse yourself.
Well, I happen to think this one's volatile enough that doing it. Online like this is not a good idea to begin with. You know, I think we really should have this done in person in chambers, personally.
Including when the shortcomings of doing online, there's a lot of flaws to it, but. You, you know, it's hard to misread. Sitting in a meeting and watching somebody leave, to sit in the audience and then talk as a citizen for a different reason and why they recuse themselves, so. But again, I think that's still your call, you're regulating yourselves on this one. I just pointed out because I think that would be consistent, Drew, unless I'm mistaken with how we've done it in the past.
No, you're right. You're right.
Jeff, can the person leave the Zoom meeting and call in or leave a comment?
So in other words, you're asking, you're asking Commissioner Musso just to make a public comment, if he wants to make a comment? But do it as a citizen, ha, having it written in, is that your question?
Log off of the Zoom meeting altogether, and then make a public comment, yes.
You're asking me to do something. Everybody else, it'd have to be written.
Yeah, and I'm technically challenged as it is, man, you know?
Well, there, I, I guess we need to make clarification, because either way, I'm going to have to read. The application, just because we advertised, okay? But I, I, I guess what it comes down to, and if you feel that way. Commissioner Musso, and I already know how Commissioner Holly feels. And I know that the other two, so it's Commissioner Smith. Are you declaring you have a conflict or you are not, or just saying that I want people to be aware. That my company did this, but I don't think it's conflict because I didn't, you know, whatever your feelings may be.
Right, right, I, I, I need to declare conflict for sure, and, and I. And I guess that's where I'll leave it, is I, I've just declared a conflict that, that it is involved, that, that my company did do an exhibit for this item.
Just did the exhibit is what you're saying, but you feel, you still feel you can vote?
Yes.
Okay. I have three of you that can vote, so we need to move forward.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll keep it very simple on that, so.
Yeah, don't, don't overkill what I said, I just, it's, this is public impression, because this isn't something that's challengeable. Someone can't say, well, I'm challenging this in court. Because the planning commission, you know, didn't correctly give a recommendation, you don't, you can't challenge a recommendation. Anyway, so, but what I hate to do is see how, how much you, you all. Do such a great job of really trying to give just honest, you know, recommendations on how you feel and how you read the law and how you see your community. To have anybody take potshots to simply say, oh yeah, sure, you approved, you recommended approval, but you couldn't. Or vice versa, oh yeah, you sat there and argued for that project, but then you wouldn't vote because they're conflict, maybe. I just, that's just unfair to you guys, I think. But I don't think there's a lot we can do about unfairness in politics, so. May not matter anyway.
So with that said, if I may, Chairperson Smith, move forward at the, the application then, is that?
Yes.
Okay, we are reviewing this G dash twenty dash zero four, general plan use map amendment. The applicant is seeking to amend the general plan land use. The requested area covers approximately three point seven six acres. The current land use designation is low density residential. The applicant is seeking approval to have the land use designation changed to the neighborhood commercial. Designation for the possibility to develop the area into a future commercial project. The surrounding general plan use designations are very low density to the north. Low density residential to the east and south, and medium density residential to the west. As stated above, the applicant, of course, is wishing to amend this parcel in hopes for. From the current family residential homestead to offer a more suited future commercial development. On this very busy intersection within Washington City. And as you know, this is at the corner of Washington Dam Road and Washington Fields Road. The two very busy roads, and that's, that's why they feel this way. The neighborhood commercial designation allows for administrative professional zoning district as well as the community commercial C one zoning district. Staff has reviewed the requested change and finds no major problem with the request from the. Low density residential to the neighborhood commercial. Based on the simple fact that the intersection of this property sets on two of the busiest streets in Washington City. The best use for the property is some kind of commercial use, though people may not agree with that. To have residences on there. I think is really kind of inappropriate for those residences due to the nature of those roads. And I know people won't agree with that, but the best use for this land. Would be unfortunately commercial or fortunately commercial, depending on what side of, of the street you sit on with this. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of G dash twenty dash zero four. To amend the general plan use map from the current low density to the proposed neighborhood commercial designation. As outlined above and in the exhibit attached to your reports. And so with that said, and we do have voting members, I'll be glad to answer any question. That the commissioners might have as it relates to my report.
Just what are the rightaways, what are those roads designated as far as width and. In the. In the transportation master plan?
I'll bring that up for you right now. Did I zoom by it, there we go. There you go. They are both minor, minor arterials, eighty-five foot cross sections. So again, there's only one designation higher than that, and that's the major arterial, which is a hundred and six wide cross section, so. It's the second highest cross section designation in the city.
And then what is the depth of this parcel? Off of that?
Uh, let's. Now again, the, the exhibits are showing deceleration lanes, but I don't know if there is a.
No, I don't see depth on the parcel.
Depth on that. Now, if I'm. If these dimensions are. Appropriate here and here. It looks to be like it might be about one seventy-five to two hundred feet deep.
Okay, so. As far as residential goes, as far as low dense, what's your, it's currently low density residential, correct?
Correct.
Low density, what's the, is that ten thousand, is that the smallest you can go on low density?
Low density is ten, yeah, is ten thousand smallest, twelve thousand is the highest.
And. We wouldn't be able to front any of these. Currently, you couldn't, you could not front any of these homes on Washington.
So you would have to build a street and then feed off of that street with a certain, you know, the radiuses. And Brandon, what is the distance that they could only do that anyway for a street, is it six hundred and fifty feet?
It's got it listed right there, Drew, on your map. For, from the corner for right in, right out is two fifty. And then six hundred to the full movement access.
Okay, I see these, yeah.
He's got it listed.
So that's. It would have to be down here with that inlet. And then you'd have to have a, a private road or a city road that would come in and then feed all these lots, and these would be the backyards. If that were the case.
Okay. So the concern is, is. Currently, if we maintain it as residential. I guess I'm wondering how you would have, you'd pretty much have to have a road behind those lots. If it was a private, I guess you could go down to about thirty-five feet. And then you'd have. A hundred and twenty feet depth. Or so to the, to the roadway.
That road would be mandatory to be built, they couldn't, they can't front Washington Dam Road like the one that's there now?
They could front them, but they could not have driveways, does that help you?
Yes.
In Treasure Valley, you used to live, I think in Treasure Valley, did you not Commissioner Hanson?
Um, Stonehenge, right next to it.
I know, but didn't you live in Treasure Valley for a while?
No, lived in Stonehenge, no, but yeah, I know what you're talking about, Treasure Valley.
Well, I don't know, even on this one, I don't think we would let them front, but let's just say you could. But again, with there'd be no driveways, you'd have to enter from the back, that's why I'm doing with the green lines here.
Yeah.
Your access is going to be back here, but again, keep in mind, I can't be more than six hundred and fifty feet. With this. This code doesn't allow me to go that much.
Six hundred, six hundred, right?
Yeah, six hundred even.
Six hundred.
So.
If it was commercial, that road would not need be, be required?
No.
Because they could come right off of Washington Dam Road.
We would allow the, the, as you see on your picture right now. These would be okay, this would have to be right in, right out only.
Yeah.
This one, then the cars could do right and left down here. But this would be a scenario of right in, right out only, right here.
I, I know you've probably answered this, with regard to the width of the road. When I was out there looking at it today, it. It, it does, I mean, it looks like there's a place the road can be widened, but it's my understanding it does not need, it won't be any wider than it is right now, is that correct?
No, it will be, if they develop, it will have to be built out to the eighty-five feet.
Oh, it's not now, okay, so that.
No, it's not, right, Brandon, it's about eighty-five right now, is it?
So that dirt area on the south will be developed, or I mean paved.
Yeah, there's no curb and gutter on this, on this south side of the road.
And if, and if, this is what I was thinking when I was looking at it today, if this was commerc, if it became commercial. I would expect that that would have had to have been widened there with that, there's like a dirt area right below where it says Washington Dam Road or whatever, I think you know what I mean? Would be the curb and gutter on the south side. That would then stop, is that correct, at the end of this?
Right here.
So it would just be widened that far?
Correct.
Till that, till that field, you know, to the east develops out.
Yeah. So, I gotta be honest, there was a comment that I heard today from a very wise man that said this was a hot topic. I didn't, I didn't realize it was hot, I don't even know what to think, is there something I'm missing? I would be very hesitant to have residential on this street because of the busyness, like the report suggests. And then I thought about commercial being there. That doesn't come as a clear-cut answer to me either, though, is, is the problem that I have with it. Bringing increased traffic to that, that small area. I mean, it's not small, but it's small enough to, to pay attention, depending on what goes there. Am I off Jason, or what, what are we thinking here?
Well. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm always cautious, I try to be cautious whenever commercials going against. Residential ever, and that's what he's asking for, and so that's why I'm trying to look at. The best scenario, I mean, worst case and best, best case scenario, I mean. That's your, your residential side, your. That's what you're going to be stuck with, and I don't know too many people that want to live. Next to an eighty, a corner, the corner lot would be. Would be triple fronted. And two of those frontage roads would be eighty-five foot road, eighty-five foot. Rightaways, which. Which is pretty large and impressive. And so I look at it that way. But in return, I look at, I look at those residences that are there that are currently. Backed up to a residence in a, in a field, and what is the. What is the. The impact on those? And depending on what goes there, I mean, that's, that's the interesting thing about this, is we're, we're talking about a zone change, which has a list of things that are. There's quite an array of things that could go there, now, if it's a. An office complex or a business building, there's probably, I mean, it's probably not a huge impact on those, those people back behind there. Because they're there during the day and nights are quiet and. And, you know, for the most part, I mean, I, you're probably not guaranteed that, but. So, I'm just trying, but, but there are other items in there that are not going to be as. As desirable to, to the homes that live there, so, I mean, those are the things that I'm just trying to, to weigh in this. And then on top of, then probably a very important thing is the property owner, I mean, it is the property owner's property. And, and. They have some entitlement to, to use it to their best use as well, so. I guess those are, those are the things that I'm weighing right now. And maybe we need to hear public comment, the public, any public comment on this so that we can see who's. Um, and maybe we need to hear public comment, the public, any public comment on this so that we can see who's commenting and, and where, and where their feelings are.
One clarification before that, if you don't mind, is the prop, is the applicant the property owner that's on that corner, that's there now, the house?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Van, do you have any comments about this?
No.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm assuming if this gets rezoned, um, then I guess at some point that house is going away.
That was a thought I had, my, my thought was that that wasn't going to be the case, but that's me guessing. Do we know, do we, well, we don't, cause it's not in the package, Drew, if that's an intention of the owner.
We don't, and it's a, we're in a general plan amendment now, so they probably don't have to provide too much information according to that.
And Commissioner, if I may, I have seen often where homes, you know, been like this, and then again, time elapses, cities get bigger, some of these homes are reconverted into an office complex, I mean, you know, or like I've seen many engineer firms buy homes like this, you know, or attorneys will buy a home and then they reconfigure the inside, that still looks like a home from the outside, but it's office on the inside. But we don't know that, you know, and I'm glad that was pointed out, but it really, but it could be either or, just to help you, but it doesn't matter at this point, because again, it's just the general plan.
Well, yeah, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to hear the public comment if we can.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, um, I will start reading these. Uh, the first one is from Markel Macy in the Fields area. They write, "We are opposed to the application for several reasons, which we, which we would ask be read during the virtual meeting being held on June third. We attended meetings for over, for other rezoning request in our neighborhood from October to December of twenty eighteen, both for the Nissen Property Preso, proposed PUD application and later for Greens' application for the multifamily home change on the Washington Fields Road at the stoplight at Washington Dam Road. Previous previous to attending the, those meetings, I had read through the Washington City General Plan to find out what was the master plan for the Washington Fields area. I liked what I read, but was disappointed in both applications for rezoning that the principles listed for transition densities from one neighborhood to the adjacent one are not higher or lower in density as found in section two point four. The wording in that section says, "In order to avoid conflict adjacent land uses, the general plan proposes general transition between densities throughout the city. Adjacent transitions are generally proposed to be no more than one category higher or lower in density. For example, medium density may be found adjacent to medium-high density, low density." Continuing down under the, I kind of lost my spot when it kicked forward. And, okay, found in section two, the wording in that section states, "In order to avoid conflict adjacent land uses, general plan proposes gradual transitions between densities throughout the city. Adjacent transitions are generally proposed to be no more than one category higher or lower in density. For example, medium density may be found adjacent to medium-high density or low density." Continuing down under residential strategies, paragraph four says, "High-density housing should be located near collector or arterial roads, and there's a buffer between low-density housing and more intense uses." Then paragraph five says, "Density transitions between adjacent properties should be gradual, not exceeding one density category difference. The transition is to be accomplished with the property or mitigated through similar building design, increased setbacks, landscaping buffers, or other means acceptable to the city." The chart two point one references for these land types uses indicate that for the town homes proposed on the Nissen Field property was medium-high density, and the adjacent property of the Lidl's on Meadow Lane is low-density, more than one-to-one as per the plan. The application for the Greens' rezone change for duplexes was again more than one density classification difference than what is proposed in the general plan. For the Nissen Field property, the planning commission voted four to one against the proposed proposal due to some higher-density issues as presented to the city council on October twenty-four, twenty eighteen. And then, when later presented to the city council in December twenty eighteen, those planning concerns were not charged as requested as the density concerns in the October twenty-fourth meeting. Yet the city council approved the zone change. My frustration is that the master plan the city has is good, but in witnessing just the few applications when we're, when we were part of the public comment process, the city went against their own general plan and against the planning commission recommendations. What we learned in both the Nissen Fields and in the Greens' application, as we listed, listened to the developers review their process of developing the parcels, in the city council meetings was that the city had approached them both ahead of time, asking them, asking for them to do what they were applying for PUD with higher density than what the general plan allows between adjacent properties for number one, the Nissen Fields, and also for number two, the attached residential units on the Greens' property. Our public comments were of no use when the city had already requested the developers to go against the general plan, and they did as requested. As to Kimball Gardner's request for rezoning, his parcel, parcel behind our home to neighboring commercial, we did not see how this sandwich, how the sandwiching it in between the low-density and Meadow Lane homes and very low-density homes on the north side of the Washington Dam Road as shown in the general plan map. Chart two point two meets the general plan. We would request the city follow the plan as already written. We have lived in some cities where a great plan must have been created and followed, resulting in a beautiful and organized city. When others we lived in that either did not have a plan or not followed resulted in a very willy-nilly fill as we drove through it. This is what it feels like driving up Washington Dam Road, where homes are interspread in between industrial and unsightly properties, obviously not per the general plan. We don't want our area to become some kind of haphazard-looking development. Our desire is to live out our days as residents of Washington City and be able to proudly drive families and friends around and show them the beautiful city we live in. Not to have, uh, pick and choose how we drive to our homes so that they won't see these poorly planned developments we fear will happen. Thank you for your time, Markel and Kathy Macy, six fifty-seven East Meadow Lane. The next comment is from Holly Lowe in the Washington Fields. "I do not want the area to be changed to commercial zones. That would put a business risk, a business, excuse me, put a business right in my backyard. The neighbors along Meadow Lane will lose privacy. The area that is in question has red as residents all around it on every side. This would negatively affect many Washington City residents. Please skip, keep the areas low-density residential." The next comment is from Vance Lowe, he lives in Washington Fields. "I have lived on Meadow Lane for eighteen years and had planned to stay long-term. I never envisioned commercial property applying my home, my house. There are many residents all around the property that do not want commercial zoning, especially when there is already high-density housing going in down the street. There are other areas that would be less congested and more suitable to commercial zoning. I plead with you to keep the property as residential." The next comment is from Lauren Bailey Lowe in the Washington Fields. "I have lived in Washington Fields since I was old enough to remember. I believe it's coming on eighteen years now. I have always enjoyed the beautiful nature around us, and I, and am always a little distraught about growing up overcoming the little town I love. If something needed, if something needs to be built in our beautiful fields, I would much rather it be homes where more people can enjoy the lovely Utah we live in. I vote down commercial zoning." The next comment is from Lauren Bailey Lowe, is that the same?
That was one you just read.
They've got it on here twice, they, they posted it at nine oh-two and at um, eighteen forty, so they just posted it twice, sorry about that. It's the exact same wording. Um, the next one is from Ida Jorgensen, "Dear Councilman, you, the Washington City Planning Department and City Hall are destroying our neighborhood, our property values, and our lives in the name of community development. Cost chaos and a community crisis, destroying the basic fibers of our community for the sake of a few tax dollars and someone's ego. My first point of concern relates to our surrounding residential area. Why is the planning office, AKA Drew Ellison, consistently pressuring us to upgrade the zone of the Nissen slash Sullivan property in our area? Why are we live, what, this is bold, why are we continually being bombarded with continual zoning upgrade or being targeted with this consistent urgency? It feels very much like harassment." "I prefer to refer to the pressure to upgrade this property zoning from the city planning office, AKA Drew Ellison, as harassment. He has initiated one zoning upgrade after another on the Sullivan Green property. In each meeting, the citizens of the area stand up and share our concerns of how these changes affect our community. Yet we are met with a deaf ear and a little sympathy for our plot and essentially left helpless and defenseless in protecting our neighborhoods or our property from the new expanded force growth. Again, with no public assurance from our city and our county leadership that they will ever entertain our needs, community or otherwise. In the zoning meeting, our requests are simple. Widen the roads so to accommodate greater influx of regional traffic. Create a plan that will deal with the greater noise levels and speeding cars and trucks that even clog our local roads from the Meadows Development to the airport and to, and the current recreation traffic. With the new zoning request, we are being forced to accept and allow this continual pursuit for commercial business except to our residential area. Question, how many times are you, the city, allowed to rezonate an area in a given timeframe? Question, Washington Fields, Dan, Fields slash Dam Roads have a noise level of a car racetrack. Who is responsible to act on this problem? I invite the mayor and any of you on the council to come for hot cinnamon rolls any morning or afternoon, though the, though his office secretary Denise to listen to the noise on our street. I bet not one of you received my invitation, and the mayor said he would take care of the problem. You guessed it, no reply. The speed, the speed limit on these two major arterial roads is forty-five miles an hour, which is way too fast for this residential area. Everyone travels fifty to fifty-five miles per hour. Anyway, even big construction trucks. Question, Washington Road and Dam Roads are designated on the master plan as major arterial roads, but at the junction of Two Thousand South, these become two lanes. Why before the crowds of people, why before the crowds of people, why are the roads not being widened? We need to widen the roads now, the cost of doing so is five to ten times more expensive later. My second comment related to the method of land acquisition. It is not a secret that Mr. Ellison and his department are engaging in a steady, calculated effort to force the commercial development along the Washington Field slash Dam Road corridor. In the, in the first public Nissen slash Sullivan property meeting, Mr. Ellison shared with us how he or his department follows, met with the Nissen family and carved out their property zoning options to be offered them. He also stood in front of us, saying blazingly to us, "If you did not support the zoning, the zoning change from agriculture to residential, our taxes would go up." A startling statement, I felt, at the time. Since the first meeting, five or more zoning requests have been approved, changing the complete landscape of our land, our neighborhood. I understand that zoning requests that alters or interferes with the surrounding makeup of the community is illegal. To date, at every city, at every city meeting held, citizens have been vehemented, demented, opposed, vehemently opposed to those zoning requests. Those voting for the zoning upgrade have been council, city council, who do not live in our community and do not have to suffer the consequences of these zoning requests. The city council does not understand the problem which we are facing, which are one, horrendously loud traffic, we cannot even carry on a simple conversation in our yard. Kimmel and Babel's situation is worse, the noise interference with their sleep, conversations, and even TV watching. We all have made calls for help to the appropriate city departments, but as with the hot cinnamon roll offer, no reply. I take that back, we offered to get Bill Clinton's famous quote, "I feel your pain," answer. Number two, speeding cars that exceed fifty to fifty-five. Number three, pollution, which I have not begun to bend your ear on. Number four, commercial impact, unwanted additional noise and confusion on which goes on in commercial establishments. Number five, building lights that illuminate the whole commercial area. We will have lights glaring into our homes all night long. City and regional land development should benefit the citizens as well as the developers' pockets and city coffers. Dam Road and the city of Washington is full of botched zoning, botched zone projects. Protect us, our region, uh, from this mad frantic zoning, from this. Ida Jorgensen. Uh, the next one is from Anne May Jorgensen in the Fields area. "Dear Council, City Council, my name is Anne May Jorgensen, and I reside in a home that backs up to Kimball Gardner's property. Our family is very disappointed to hear that Kimball's property is being considered for rezon to commercial. Should this rezoning pass, the value of our home would decrease considerably. This is unfortunate for all who live on our street. Not only we, will we have to deal with the decrease of the value of our homes due to the stock market crash with the recent pandemic, but now we will lose further value because there will be commercial property backing up to our land. Whoever is planning the city of Washington is really struggling to develop a coherent unified city with a flowing, with a with a flowing, with a flow between commercial and residential areas that actually makes sense. Why is the planning of our city being executed so poorly? Kimball's property is positioned directly between two residential areas. Our street of Meadow Lane and a neighborhood. Why would one want to throw a small commercial space between these two residential areas? We do not want to increase the floor traffic, preventing our children from safely playing outside. The noise hindering our ability to comfortable, to be comfortable in our homes or bright street lights shining in our eyes as we sleep. The mismanagement of our city is inheriting, oh, disheartening and a lack of concern for the Washington citizens. Hard-earned investments in their property is especially cruel. We do not want to have strangers coming in and out of the businesses right behind our house where they may see into our homes. And we may have to deal with their noise and pollution. Please recognize this zone change. Please reconsider this zone change. We want to keep our neighborhood a safe, comfortable space where we are happy to raise our families. Anne Mae Jorgensen. The next one is from Burke Jorgensen. He writes, we live right behind Kimball Gardner's property and are upset about the the idea of having commercial land as a neighbor. Please reconsider the request for rezoning. Wouldn't it be better to have the city buy Kimball's land and turn it into a park instead? Then the entire community could benefit and those of us backing up to this property would not be faced with the repercussions of our property value decreasing. The next comment is from Tony Permain from the Washington Fields. She types, I'm opposed to the request Z, excuse me, G dash twenty dash four application to amend the general plan, land use map from the current low-density residential LD, low-density to the proposed neighborhood commercial not, and designation. The additional traffic, noise and potential crime to the homes and families directly adjacent to this land would be unfair to the current homeowners that purchase home because of the quiet, relaxed area. We have already had to deal with immense growth during a surge of traffic and noise in our backyards and the corner at which this reference to is already becoming more dangerous each year. Commercial businesses would increase that danger. The next comment is from Melane, Melanie Claiborne, Melane, Melane Camber. I live on the north side of Meadow Lane. The property in question backs up to my back fence. Having commercial rather than residential zoning will negatively impact all homeowners on my street with a commercial enterprise right in our backyards. We do not need additional commercial in our area as was discussed in a previous planning meeting for the Fields just west of Meadow Lane. They have been, they have been zoned for single homes rather than a strip mall that was originally proposed. Meadow Lane had only one exit for the entire street to the main road. We are less than half of a city block from the traffic light on, on Dam Road and tracks backs, making it, our interest to our main road very difficult. Adding additional commercial traffic will only add to the roadblocks and the noise. Single-family homes would be welcome there. The next comment is from Leonard Bevel. We are directly behind Kimball's house. If rezoning occurred, we would be impacted much more than we are now. The noise level our home is such that a conversation cannot be had. The truck traffic is horrendous. Since the city did not provide for sound barriers on the Washington Fields Road, I'm fairly certain they will not do so for the Washington Dam Road properties. Terrible. We do not want even the possibility of commercial zoning. And let me just make sure nothing else has come in. That's the last public comment we have.
All right, thank you.
Wow, now I understand a little better. Why it was, why it's a hot topic, okay?
So with that, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Hanson, so moved.
Second, yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzomfo?
Aye.
I am also an aye. So I guess I always want to make this clear. The city or their staff do not make application to rezone a property. That is done by the property owner. And, and in this case, it was done by the property owner or a representative of the property owner. So the other thing I got with the comment is, is we have some sightings of the general plan which were correct. They, they talk about changes, but they also read the same. They read the, there's, there's two items there. They read that we shouldn't, we shouldn't have low-density next to, we should, we should move our zonings in a stage sequence. But they also, in the same breath, it was also said that we shouldn't have residential on, on busy streets and collector roads, which that's what these are. That's what they've been planned to be. So, so I agree with the comments there that both of those are correct. So we have to make a decision one way or the other. We're either going to agree with the general plan in one direction or we're going to have to agree with the general plan in another correct direction in this case. Other comments? Questions for staff or the applicant? I'm not sure if the applicant is available or not, but.
This is Commissioner Hanson. I do have a question for staff. There's a line in our packet at the very end where it says the best use of this property is some kind of a commercial use, residential use, that this location is not safe or sound or safe. I kind of wanted just to hear a little bit more about that. That, that's a staff collective suggestion that it's better for commercial there. Is it because of the safety or are there other issues? Or maybe any, any other additional words you could add to that line? I'd appreciate that.
It's kind of a combination of everything, you know, you look at, and again, I heard a lot of the comments, people talked about they can't even have a conversation in their backyard. But yet we want residential there and even closer. I'm just wondering what would happen for those poor folks. So that's what, whenever you have those busy streets, you know, I have a city employee here who, who owned a house years ago and now all of a sudden she's on one of the busiest roads in St. George. You know, as an example, and it's not a place to have a residence. So that's the only reason I say that. After being in, you know, the planning profession for twenty-four plus years, you know, there's just certain corners and certain areas that you don't want to ask somebody to have to have their house to invest in a two-hundred to six-hundred thousand dollar home and put it on that corner. I just, you ask anybody, I mean, these folks already live two-hundred feet away from it and they're the, you know, what is, they already have as relates to that, that busy road and the noise, noise of it. So it's, so in answering, it's a combination of all those things.
Yeah.
You know, safety, best use, you know, is it, is it residential? Well, I, you know, I, I don't know. I could probably go poll a hundred people, see who'd want to live on that corner. And then probably come back not real favorable.
Yeah.
But yet because of the traffic availability that, you know, that business or offices would be more appropriate. Does that kind of answer that question or not? Or make it worse?
It does, yeah. Kind of one of the things, one of the things I do want to say, Drew, is I, and I don't know, you guys have thicker skin than I do because a lot of these comments, as I'm listening to them, I, I think the people are frustrated. I understand that. I would be frustrated if I lived there. I've tried to put myself in that position, but to say some things about the staff that was said, I completely disagree that, that you guys don't do anything short of a great job. And I always have said, there's always a reason. If you can get to the bottom of the, finding out what that reason is, why something is how it is, that answers a lot of the questions. And for me, so I'm, I'm, I'm personally sorry I had to sit there and listen to some of those comments that are completely untrue from my experience of dealing with the staff here. And I say that not to, I don't know, I just feel, I just feel bad. I mean, we're trying to do the best thing for the city. And it's, there's a reason that we do these things. It's not because someone's in my pocket or someone's telling me this or at lunch with that guy. For me at least, has nothing to do with that. And to hear more than one or two or five comments say that, it's kind of disheartening because there's a reason these things are done. And it's just disappointing to me. I absolutely understand both sides of it. I feel like I know which way I'm leaning for it myself, but I, I just, it seems to me the, the, it's become more suitable for a commercial because the development that's taken place over the last couple of decades. Is that a fair statement to say?
Oh, totally fair. You know, when, when I first came here and I, I look at Washington Fields Road, the five lanes that it is now. When I started here at the city fourteen years ago, that road that runs right by this, you know, Washington Fields Road now is a two-lane road that had a irrigation ditch that water was always running in it, you know, and I thought that was so cool, but the city's grown. Now it's a five-lane road. You know, again, unfortunately, growth pushes and changes a lot of things. And, and it, and it's part of the ugly side of growing as a city. Those growing pains, so to speak, is the best way to say it. And, and it's not always fair and it's not always right, but it's, it kind of ends up being what it is, you know. For the people who own the property, you know, I, I did hear the comments too, but again, after twenty-four years, I learned to think like a duck, you know, and let that roll because that's what you have to do and and I get why they say that. I understand it, you know, again, and I appreciate that. So, and I appreciate your comments as well and Commissioner Smith's as well, so.
That's crazy. Well, I, I know that, I guess, Jason, my thought from my point of view is that I said this before, I'm glad I'm not on City Council making a decision. I'm just here to make recommendations from my opinion, from what I know and have experienced, the best use of this. City council can make that decision of what they're going to do and that's in their hands and that's why they're elected. So I know that my position is not binding. I personally wish that it would stay residential. I agree that commercial probably is a better use for that piece of property, in my opinion. But I also, I guess more, more percentage of my mind leads to I wanted it to be commercial simply because that's, that's what it was. I know the city's grown out there, even though it's not popular to be commercial there and it's not safe. I don't know. I'll let City Council make that decision, but for me, my heart, mind goes to that it should still stay, stay residential.
I mean, I kind of wonder it may be a better commercial fit, but what demand is there really? Because even though it is, I don't know, there's, I don't know.
Demand for either commercial or residential, in my opinion.
It's kind of like one of those weird parcels that, like that, that eleven hundred East Telegraph, Telegraph parcel. It's kind of like one of those weird parcels you don't know what to do with, you know?
Again, I think City Council has a better insight than I do for all of this and what, what ultimately to do with it. And I'm glad that that's a decision they can make. Just for me personally, I, I, I've, I would side on the, keeping it there for residential.
Before we make a motion, I, is the applicant available? Is he online? I'd like to hear from him just what he feels, you know, if he wants to speak and I mean, we, the public has spoken on there, so if we can talk to the applicant, the applicant can just share his feelings on this. I would appreciate that too.
Hello, this is Kimball Gardner. And I'm sorry that people in Meadow Lane feel the way they do. But I dare any of them to come and trade me houses for a month. Or if they were as interested in the property, they could all go together and, and purchase the property. I have no problem with that. But to live on the corner of the Washington Dam Road is unbearable. I've been here for twenty-eight years before the Dam Road was even there. And times have changed, times have changed around us and it's time for change now. What the commercial use would be, I have no clue. But we're just zoning it commercial because of the high-density traffic that is traveling by our home. I would recommend that those people that live on Meadow Lane, if they have a problem, I'd be more than happy to chat with any of them and see what we can figure out.
Kimball, this is Commissioner Hanson. It sounds to me like, listening to their comments, maybe you can address directly what I hear them saying is you're making our lives a lot more miserable. I understand yours might be miserable. I personally understand that, what you just said. What would you say to them if, if doing this makes their lives more miserable for them? And that's not what they had, not necessarily signed up for, but that's not what was zoned behind them when they bought those houses?
You know, there's a wall between Meadow Lane and, and my property from one end to the other. I hardly even know the neighbors on the other side, other than through different affiliations that we, we travel in.
We don't have neighbors.
We don't, we don't have any neighbors. We live on the Dam Road where the traffic is out of, out of control. It's not going to get any better. Up the street, about three miles, they're building a new subdivision that has over five hundred homes. And it's just to the south of the dump grounds. It's under progress right now. You're building another dam out there. It's in access to the main new highway that goes into Hurricane. The Washington Dam Road is going to get nothing but busier and busier and busier. And the people that live on Meadow Lane, that, that, that wall can only protect them for so long. I have sympathy with them, but all I'm trying to do is change my property to a commercial zone so that we can do something rather than live here. That's about all I can say right now. I'd appreciate it.
You, you cut out on the last part there, if you wouldn't mind stating it again.
Cut out, did you say?
Yeah, the last sentence, I think I didn't hear. You remember what it was?
I would just appreciate your comments on the, on the property. And I'd invite any of them to come and visit my home at any time. I love this place. If you used to come to my backyard, there's probably not a nicer backyard in Washington Fields.
Yeah.
And I would be more, have somebody come and visit and see what they have, I go through every day.
So just so I understand, and I was, I, I, I know where your house is. I've been over there. I've looked at this. I know you don't have neighbors. What I'm suggesting was the people that, that are on the other side of that wall are the ones saying to the commission here, hey, no, I think collectively, no. But of course, that's typically how it goes when a project comes up that's controversial, you get the negative, not the positive. And that's fine. But what I, if, what I understood, from me, my point of view, what you said was that wall can only protect you for so long because that growth is coming regardless of what's going to go there. Whether it's commercial, whether it's residential or something, that's, that's going to go away and not be able to protect them forever. Is that right?
Was that question pointed towards me?
It was. I was just trying to confirm what you're, that's, you're, what I'm trying to understand is if there was two people sitting in front of me having a conversation, you're one of them, and one of these people that submitted these comments from Meadow Lane was the other. I, I'm kind of interested in what you would say to them because you are, this is going to affect them in a way that it sounds collectively none of them want.
You take away my house and you take away my trees and you take away my garages and you take away my storage and then see what they would enjoy the noise that goes up and down the road. And then see what they would enjoy the noise that goes up and down the road. Because that, that six-foot wall that's in the backyard can only, only produce or reflect so much sound. And just like the, the lady on the corner, I've never met her, and she, she said that the noise is just out of control. But she's only lived in the house for less than one year, where was she when, when she was buying the house? You know, I couldn't invite some, coming by my house right now, and have them stand on the front driveway and try to, try to get, negotiate a sale. You see what I'm saying?
I do. If I lived on Meadow Lane, could you tell me a way that allowing this to happen would make my, my situation better?
I was here ten years before Meadow Lane was even created or even thought about. They, so they have no clue what, what's taking place in the past twenty-eight years. Some of them said they've been there for eighteen years, but they still have seen the progress that we're all going through at the present time.
Yeah.
You're gonna put five hundred houses to the, to the east of us, and you're gonna put five hundred houses to the west of us, and you're gonna put. The Washington Fields Road is only gonna get busier and busier and busier. And the growth is just schools, churches, it just keeps on growing, just like Sister Jorgensen said, you know? They're getting bombarded from the front, as well as a, a steak center in the backyard of their home.
Yeah.
I, I didn't, didn't make that at all.
I don't think you necessarily have to answer this, but I'm kinda curious for my own, are you planning on staying, or are you planning on leaving?
Well, if, if I don't sell my house, I'll plan on staying, cause I got nothing else to do, I'll just get lower, lower density area.
Yeah. Alright, I appreciate your comments, thank you. Anyway, commissioners, I go back to the same thing, where it's, it's a tough, uh. It's a tough decision, and I appreciate City Council being there to make it.
Any further discussion? End or a motion?
I don't know which way he wants this motion to go, who wants to make it?
Well, there's not very many of us to make it, so.
I know, Ben, do you have any other comments that you wanna make?
No, other than, you know, like I said before. I wonder what demand there is really for commercial there, because it's not really, in my opinion, a prime spot for commercial. I don't know.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, you guys can agree with it or not. I don't know, I didn't sit here and go back and forth all night. I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend the City Council denial for G dash twenty dash oh four, request to amend the general plan use map in the area located in the southeast corner of Washington Fields Road, Washington Dam Road. For the current low-density residential designation to a new proposed neighborhood commercial general plan land use designation, applicant is Kimble Gardner.
State a reason, please, Mr. Commissioner Hanson.
Uh, the reason I would say was the overwhelming. Opposition. From the public, I would like to have City Council. Take that into consideration, that, that there was zero positives and all negatives. I think that's something that would be enough for me to, to draw a recommendation like this.
Have a motion.
I'm thinking.
Don't think too long, Ben.
And this is, it's tough, I mean.
I feel the same way, man, I'm just picking a direction and going with it, it, because. I, I welcome City Council to take, take this on and handle it. That's all, that's the only reason I picked this particular way, I just, that's how my gut tells me to go.
Uh, point of clarification, I know that I technically can't do this, but. I guess I'm asking, it has to be unanimous either way to move it forward, is that correct?
Correct. So, it has to be a three, three oh vote, because that's what, it takes three votes to make anything happen, and there's only three of you, so.
I second that, just because I don't think there's, it's not. I don't know what the demand there really would be for commercial there.
Um, can I? Can I amend your reason why? You're requesting denial?
I don't have a problem with it, if you're asking me.
Yeah, I would recommend that we amend that request for denial in stating. That it doesn't conform to the portion of the general plan that, that. Um, suggests. The tiering of low-density to commercial as opposed to just public comment.
Okay, you want me to restate the motion?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, this is Commissioner Hanson, I make a motion that we recommend denial. To City Council on item G dash twenty dash oh four, request to amend the general plan use map in the area located in the southeast corner of Washington Fields Road, Washington Dam Road. And the current low-density residential designation to a proposed neighborhood commercial general planned land use designation. Applicant is Kimble Gardner, reasons for denial are twofold, one, overwhelming opposition from the public in the. Comment section, number two, that it doesn't conform to the general plan that suggests. Low-density to commercial zone changing. How's that?
It's better.
I second that.
Barely.
Okay, I have, I have a motion and a second. Now. Point of clarification again. The issue I have here is, we'll be here all night. If I don't want to vote one way or the other way, or someone else doesn't vote one way or the other way.
Right.
So. In the lieu of having two members. In favor of denial. I'm inclined to vote. Eye on the motion, because. Because I don't wanna be here all night. But I don't know if that's truly how I would vote in. Does that make sense to staff, or?
No, absolutely, I get what you're saying.
Is there, is there a, is there a, uh?
There's, there's no other way, unfortunately, and, and every once in a while, a council member or a commissioner gets stuck in this, this rock and hard place. Because you don't feel that you have strong enough argument to turn them both, you may turn one. To think a different direction, and I'm, I don't mean turn in a bad way, I hope you guys understand what I'm saying. And I know you're all struggling with it, but, no, I think you're totally appropriate, and, but state that, Commissioner, you know, when you vote your. Your aye or nay, feel free to put that and let it be in the minutes, because.
I guess. I guess before I, before I make a vote. I would, if the, I would entertain the applicant requesting a table to allow the other commissioner that wasn't here. To speak, if, if that's what he would sooner do, if not, I, I'll make that motion.
So, Kimble, are you still there?
Yes.
Yes.
So what he's asking you is, would you entertain letting these guys, or at least have the possibility of it being tabled? Allowing for the commissioner who's not here tonight to be here in two weeks. And then you'll have four people voting. Um, on this, or you could just accept, it sounds like they'll vote denial, and then you'll move on to the City Council, three weeks from tonight automatically. You understand what I'm saying, so you can, he's asking, would you entertain a table, or do you wanna just take the denial, knowing why, how it's coming and move toward the City Council?
I personally would like to see it tabled, I'd say.
Okay, now, they still have to vote that way, don't, I'm not guaranteeing that, but that's just clarity for you, and so that's, so I think that answers your question, Chairperson Smith, that he would, he would accept the tabling and wait two weeks.
Okay.
The other two commissioners.
I have a motion. To recommend denial. We have to vote on it, so Commissioner Hanson?
Um, I'm, I'm thinking here, cause what you just said kinda threw me off.
You're voting on your motion.
You're most, voting on your motion, then we could. If it doesn't pass, then we can go and make another motion.
I'm voting aye on my motion.
Okay, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
I vote nay, motion fails. With lack, lack of vote. I will now entertain a new motion.
That we table this until the next meeting, is that what we're talking about here, just to make sure?
Yeah.
Ben, do you wanna make that motion? Uh, or do you want me to, only because I don't know if I can make two motions in a row?
I can do it, but what, what's the exact date of the next meeting?
Seventeenth of June.
I make a motion that we table. Um, G dash twenty dash zero four to until June seventeenth. Uh, Planning Commission in order to. Get. More members to vote, more Planning Commission? Members to vote, is that correct? Is that, is that how I, I should?
Well, just to allow Commissioner Henry to be at the meeting, and, and.
Applicant's request.
That, yeah.
To allow Commissioner Henry. To. Um, allow him to vote?
That's, yeah, that's good enough.
Okay.
Uh, I'll second that motion with just one clarifying question. What happens if Commissioner Henry comes back and the vote's two to two, then what? I, I just don't see this ending somehow with this. One of us, a couple of us change our ways about how we do this, and I'm not opposed to that, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out a way to ignore. The reason I made the first motion in the first place, not ignore, but.
Right.
Minimize that.
And, and I guess just to put that in, at least, at least you'll have two going each way, it's gonna be easier for the. For one person to change his mind and go with the other two, versus trying to change two people to make up a three-person vote, is that?
You still only need one more vote, you don't necessarily need.
You don't, you're unanimous then, is that right?
Correct. Nothing else, nothing else will change, uh, what would happen if you have a two-to-two tie, is it simply would be, uh. It failed to receive a majority recommendation, and therefore is being passed on to the council.
With a two-to-two split.
With, yeah, that's how it'd go on, I think.
Alright, I, I'll second that motion, thank you.
I have a motion and a second, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye. Thank you, gentlemen, so, Kimble, this will be on the next Planning Commission in two weeks. And that concludes our meeting, so I would entertain a motion to close the, to, to end this meeting.
This is Commissioner Hanson, so moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 If there are any opposed, they can stay on this meeting all night if they want to, we're, we're going home. Thank you.
Good night, guys, good, good job, really good job, admirable job, thanks, everybody.
Yep, thanks staff and everything that you guys have been doing.
Yeah, yeah, good job, thanks. Kathy, Denise, commissioners, good night.